Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have twelve present in the meeting and twelve present and voting. So the clerk.
All right, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Barbendorf.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Dorf.
Thank you. Dear Lord, tonight I ask your blessing on two special groups of people. First, Lord, I ask you to bless the people of Ukraine with this prayer. God of peace and justice, we pray for the people of Ukraine today. We pray for peace and the laying down of weapons. We pray for all those who fear for tomorrow, that your spirit of comfort would draw near to them. We pray for those with power over war or peace, for wisdom, discernment, and compassion to guide their decisions. Above all, we pray for all your precious children at risk and in fear, that you would hold and protect them. And also, Lord, tonight I ask your blessings on our city employees. I ask you to help them deal with the adversity that comes their way, sometimes on a daily basis, to help them continue to do their work in a way that helps this city and its people, to hold them up when times are tough, to help them understand that they are loved, supported, and appreciated. When they are faced with challenges in their daily work, let them be guided by the saints, by some words of a prayer, often attributed to Saint Francis of Assisi. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Lord, I ask you to bless them and keep them, to let your faith shun upon them, and to give them peace. Amen.
Thank you, Alder. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Motion to approve the minutes from our February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda.
I will turn up the, the volume a little bit, but we, we can't go much higher, otherwise we could get some feedback, so. Alder Dorf?
Thank you. I'd like to move to the, to amend the agenda and to move. P, um, up, letter P up to after letter K, and that would be the Plan Commission. Um, there's one item on there that should be dealt with earlier in the meeting. So that's my motion.
Okay, Alder Dorf makes a motion to amend the agenda to place item, uh, the report, report P before report K. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Alder Weary?
It would be after this, unless you want an additional.
That's okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That amendment has been adopted. Alder Weary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this, I have a guess that there's a lot of people here for, uh, one of the committees, uh, Protection Policy Committee, and rather than have them sit through some, some items, I would move that, uh, that committee, which is N, be moved right after I, after appointments.
Second.
Excuse me.
So, moving.
I'm going to order, the reason I moved it up.
Alder Dorf.
Is because there are three people here that would like to speak on what I know. I understand that, Alder Weary, that your item will be, be long, but I felt it more appropriate to move it to after all of our regular duties, such as the presentation and ordinances. So if you're gonna do that, then I will reamend the agenda, and I think it's kinda silly. Would you please, Alder Weary, would you please allow plan to go early in the meeting?
It's not, it's not to me, it's up to the council. I, I would just say, let's move the presentation then, from the Sustainability Committee, after those two committees, Protection and Policy and Planning. I think that would, and, and I do think that the one that you brought forward would be quick, so we, we could handle that first.
I do think it will be very quick. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to move the presentation?
It would, it would go, uh, I, then the Plan Commission, which is P, I believe, and then N. I, P, N, and then the rest of the, the rest.
I, P, N, J.
I, P, N, J.
I think that's a reasonable.
Okay, a motion has been made, uh, to amend the agenda, to put, uh, items P, N, and J right behind, uh, I. That was made by Alder Weary and seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda has been amended. Another motion?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second. Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Report for the mayor. Um, there's plenty that could be said tonight, but I think I'll keep it brief. Um, Alder Dorf did a nice job with the invocation, sorting, uh, sort of setting the table for us this evening. Um, you know, we are fortunate to live in a democracy, one that is not under attack, like, uh, the one in Ukraine, unfortunately. Um, so I just wanna emphasize the point that we are all friends and neighbors here. We have opposing viewpoints, and we're gonna have some disagreements aired tonight, but it's really important to emphasize that, um, while we might have some of these political disagreements, um, you know, we are not enemies. So with that, hoping for a very respectful discussion this evening. Onto announcements from the council. Alder Brunette and then Alder Gerlach?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Alder Dorf for her very moving prayer. Um, it's very important. As a community, we stick together during these times. I agree with that as well. Uh, but I wanna welcome and thank the public for being here today. This is a very welcome sight. It's remarkable to see so many members from the public here before their city government. As you all know, this government belongs to the people. We just have the opportunity to serve in these positions during a certain amount of time that we have the opportunity to serve in them. So it's wonderful to see so many members of the public take an interest in their government. And the Zoom room, for those who can't see the Zoom room, we have about seventy people there as well. So just a wonderful, wonderful thing to see so many people here present. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach and then Alder Steyer?
Today is World Futures Day, and it has been celebrated around the world for about ten years, and today, for the first time ever, World Futures Day was celebrated in the Green Bay area. It took place on the Saint Norbert campus, and, uh, we had a few people from our city staff there. Uh, World Futures Day here locally was sponsored by Envision Greater Green Bay, and so we have a few staff people who are training with Envision in force, in strategic foresight. And so they joined us. We had a speaker from London, England. It was a wonderful day for the Green Bay area. So happy World Futures Day.
That's great. Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I also would like to thank Alder Dorf for her prayer and the kind comments from Alder Brunette. Uh, you know, we're thinking about Ukraine right now, but we also need to think of other areas too in the world that might, might not get as much news, but you have Myanmar, Afghanistan, Yemen, Ethiopia, Syria. All you have to do is look at a world map and see where all the trouble and fighting is going on, where people are worried about just living, period. So we have a lot to be thankful for in this country, and let's keep our prayers and thoughts and aid to those areas as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alda Lufave?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, um, because it's very sad what's going on in the world, especially the Ukraine, and I tried to find the colors. It's not quite, kinda past, pastel colors, but I tried, I said, where are the colors in, uh, support? Um, it's very important. Yes, we have democracy here, and, uh, it's important to support a country that had democracy, and, uh, someone's trying to take them over. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move along to appointments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Reappointments?
Reappointments.
Motion to approve the reappointments made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Lufave. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and those reappointments are confirmed. New appointments? Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens. Discussion here? Alder Brunette?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to be noted as abstaining from both of the new appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and those new appointments are made. Congratulations to our new city attorney and our chief of operations, Joe Faltz. All right. Next, we have, if I have this right, report P, reported the Plan Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. Any items here to be handled separately?
Yes.
Alder Dorf?
It would be to, um, item number three, to amend the city's comprehensive plan for property located in the four thousand block of Shampo Road from a future commercial land use designation to light industry. And I would, um, I don't have much to say on this right now, but I would like to make a motion to open the floor.
Okay, item three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving item two as well? Two and three, Alder Johnson?
Yep, I just need to be recorded as abstaining from item number two, as the petitioner is a member of my executive committee that oversees my compensation.
So noted. So items two and three will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items two and three. Your wishes on item two? Alder Corpus Dax?
Send that back to committee.
Alder Corpus Dax makes a motion to refer, um, item two back to Plan Commission?
Plan Commission, yep. That is gonna allow, uh, staff, um, to confirm that all of the changes are being incorporated appropriately.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. Any further discussion on that motion? Alder Gerlach?
I just wanna say, uh, that's in my district, and I certainly, um, am very interested in the robust development of East Town Mall, but I think in this case, uh, the staff has assured us that they can take care of this probably in two weeks, and I think it is important to be prudent and careful with the language. I've, um, been told some of the, um, things that can go wrong if you're not careful with your easements, so, um, I, I am in favor of that motion to send it back to staff.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion to refer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That item has been referred back to the Plan Commission. Item three? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Um, there was some interest in opening the floor?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion at this time to open the floor.
Alder Dorf makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open.
Uh, Your Honor?
Yes, Clerk Jeffries?
Yes, thank you. I do have two comments that were submitted ahead of the meeting. Um, I believe Mr. Lenz is in the meeting, and I see Mr. Moore is in the meeting. So, uh, if, I, if that's okay, I think I would take these two people first and then proceed with any other, uh, members of the public who have comments.
Yep, that makes sense to me. I'm just gonna confirm or check and see if anybody in the audience is here for Plan Commission. Anyone in person here for the Plan Commission? Okay, if you're here. So what we are ideally supposed to do is alternate between those who are in Zoom and those who are in person, so we'll go first to somebody in Zoom and then go back to in-person here.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Um, so, Mr. Moore, if you would please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council, and I will begin the timer.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Joe Moore, I, uh, am employed by Seidel and Associates at eight thirty-nine Lombardi Avenue in Green Bay, and, uh, I just wanted to, uh, assure that the council was aware that I am here, I can answer some questions. I, I support the project, um, and I'll disclose it. I do represent the seller, uh, the current owner of the property and have for several years now, and, um, I've got a lot of background on the property, if anybody does have questions, either from the public or from the council. Um, and the developer Seth is also available if needed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for Mr. Moore from council? Okay, seeing none, we go, we'll go to one of our in-person guests, and if you could just approach the podium here and state your name and address for us.
My name is Chuck Servie. I live at thirty-eight sixty-seven Shampo Road, New Franken, which is in the town of Scott. My purpose for attending this meeting is to register my opposition to the amendment to the city's comprehensive plan for the property located in the four thousand block of Shampo Road from commercial to light industry. I'm an owner of the property in the University Heights Business Park. This land was part of the annexation to the city of Green Bay. As an owner, I was involved in numerous meetings with the city staff regarding planning, future land uses, infrastructure, and economic development. The land that is being requested to be rezoned is commercial. The city planners, public works, economic development personnel, and owners felt commercial zoning was the best for this land along the highway and the intersection of fifty-four fifty-seven. This is the last major interchange that serves as a gateway to Door County. In our planning discussions, the property owners and the planners felt commercial zoning would stop some of the numerous calls for storage buildings. Storage buildings will not bring the required tax increment to this area and assist in paying the infrastructure. Through a cooperative boundary agreement, the town of Scott and the city of Green Bay formed a joint, joint planning commission. This commission was put in place to promote and allow for cooperation between the two municipalities in regards to land uses. Each municipality can benefit if the land development is done correctly. The joint planning commission met and unanimously, unanimously disagreed with the request to spot rezon. A development plan was put in place to discourage pot, spot rezoning. Last year, ICS properties tried to have the town of Scott, or the town of Humboldt, rezon property for storage buildings on the other side of the highway. The town of Scott, town of Humboldt, and the city of Green Bay expressed in writing their disagreement with this rezoning. At least fifty area residents were at the meeting to register oppositions to storage buildings in this area. All the reasons for denial of this request are still valid and apply to this second request.
What's that, Mark? Yeah, I'll put them away.
Recently, landowners in this business park have begun new conversations on the overall development plan with the city planners, public works, and economic development director. This is not the ti- appropriate time to make a decision that would result in spot rezoning while these discussions are occurring. A delay or a denial would allow this area to develop like all city planners and economic development personnel, past and present, agree should take place.
Excuse me, I do not believe that you can see the timer, sir.
Okay.
The three-minute tag's expired, so if you would just be so kind as to wrap it up.
Thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our resident, Alder Galvin?
Thank you, uh, for coming here and speaking before us. How, how much land do you own?
One hundred and fifty acres of the business park.
And, and how long have you owned it for?
Uh, the annexation took place about twenty years ago. It's about twenty, twenty-plus years, few years.
And do you use the land for anything other?
Right now, it's agriculture.
And is that, you, what do you receive? Uh, you rent it out to someone?
Rent it out to a farmer.
Okay. And do you have any plans? I mean, has anyone approached you to use or develop that land?
Yes, a number of times they've approached us to develop it. Uh, inquiries come in, but the economy in two thousand and eight kinda put standstill to some of the, uh, development that was going on. Um, but yes, we've been contacted. Uh, it hasn't gone anywhere. One of the issues that we're working with the, um, Public Works Department of the City of Green Bay is bringing a long-term water source to that area. Right now, they're, they're using, uh, the town of Scott's water to, for the Aurora Clinic and a couple other businesses that are there. But yes, we have had inquiries, um, and we're, right now, we're looking at, uh, with the planning department, uh, coming up with a, with a plan and a marketing plan and as a joint effort with the city of Green Bay, 'cause it's, um, you know, it's the next I forty-three concept, uh, as far as a business park for the city of Green Bay.
Okay, it's, and, and so what kind of development do you anticipate happening there? What, what, what do you see being there?
Well, as along the highway is a lot of commercial, uh, you know, a grocery store, which brings, which is good for the town of Scott and the area. There's enough land in that business park. I believe there's like, I'm gonna say about nine hundred acres that were annexed into the city of Green Bay, which can be mixed-use development, um, a number of different things that can go on. But as far as the highway area, it was always a planner's preference to keep that as commercial along the highway.
Okay, and, um, i- if there was a, uh, storage facility there, do you think that harms the value of your property or the ability to develop it?
I believe it harms the, the value, and it harms the look and the feel of the area. Uh, with talking with the planners and economic development groups of people, it's, they've used the word, it's a gem. It's a plain SimCity. We can do, it's, it's large enough to be able to create a, uh, a village-type atmosphere or, or, or an area where people can come to and live and shop and, and, uh...
So you're anticipating residential then, also?
Some parts of it. Right now, they're talking about some residential, yes.
But that wouldn't be allowed in the commercial area?
Well, if it's commercial, it, it would be commercial, and the residential would be a little further up the road from it, from the highway.
So if I understand, commercial, we're looking at office buildings or industrial-type buildings, grocery stores, that kinda stuff?
Grocery stores, things that people need that, uh, you know, whether it's a haircutting place or, or things that people need that would live in the area and, and come to and, or stop on their way up to Door County and, and, uh, purchase something.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time. Okay. Any other questions for our guests?
Alder Vanderlist?
Sir? One other question for you. Are you asking for a, a little bit more of a delay before they move forward on this, uh, project? Is that what your request is?
Well, we're looking for a delay or a denial. One of the things that the planning department, in meeting with them, is, uh, the storage buildings just don't meet what they feel would be appropriate for the area, and it could, the land would be better suited for something else. It's right next to the Aurora Clinic. There's been conversation that that's a perfect spot for, uh, a medical-type area, you know, bringing the next chiropractor, the dentist, the, um, eye care professionals, or whatever for that area, has been talked about before, uh, you know, with the Prairie Clinic. I believe was looking at some land in that area also. You know, the, the Quick Trip on the Corner, um, was looking for land at one time, too.
Are you working with other developers to, to meet the, the criteria of, of, of your development? In other words, are you working together to try to do this?
Yes, it's, it's a cooperative, uh, uh, meetings go on with, uh, the town of Scott. They like to know what's going on, because that'll help them, and then whatever they do in their area will help the, the, uh, the city of Green Bay. One thing that, uh, with the joint planning commission, that was part of the boundary agreement that this city and the town came up with, um, to make it seamless. The joint planning area is actually almost like four thousand acres, okay? Some of it is in the town of Scott, some of it is in the city of Green Bay. Well, if the city of Green Bay is, uh, if we decide that the, uh, school needs to be located in that area, well, it benefits the town of Scott, 'cause they might have residential, or vice versa. If the school locates in the town of Scott, it'll help the city of Green Bay. So I know that the town is continually talking with the city of Green Bay on what goes on. So to answer your question, yes, developers, other landowners, uh, other two townships, uh, Green City of Green Bay, are, are, we're trying to work together to make that corner fifty-four fifty-seven be a, a gem, you might say.
Thank you. I was going to just ask, uh, Alder Dorf, uh, is there a time as far as, uh, if we delayed this project for sixty days or ninety days, would that be helpful?
I wanted to hear what the public had to say first. That is certainly something that was on my mind, but that's why I wanted the floor to be open to hear what the request was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Alder?
That answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer for our resident? Questions for the resident? Yep.
I think one of the issues in that area is that there, uh, there isn't sewer water in part of that area out there. So, you know, I, once we get back to talking to staff here, I mean, I'd, I'd really like to know what, you know, what is out there or what may happen in the future, and
Sure.
Does that, does that kinda push your, your thoughts as well, because you can't really develop it?
Well, I can, I can answer that question. Um, back when the, uh, annexation was occurring, uh, the Public Works Department with the city of Green Bay, Carl Weber at the time, uh, met with the Met, and they do have, they pushed the water and sewer, the wa- excuse me, they pushed the sewer through the area. Uh, it's a system-wide pipe, it's a twenty-one-inch pipe, that also takes, uh, Luxembourg, uh, New Franken area. It, there's a main interceptor line that runs through the property, so it is all sewer, okay? The water line is, is scheduled to come over from Spartan Road, and again, through economic conditions, that was put on hold. So the town of Scott said, "Let's keep development going the best way we can," so they allowed the city to use their water source. They will use their pipes that cross the highway for the Aurora Clinic and a couple other businesses that are in the area.
Okay.
Mobile gas station.
That's good. That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
And the roads, roads were planned, uh, you know, hiking and biking trails have already been, you know, looked at and adopted. Area development plans have been adopted, and it was all presented to council a few years ago, which approved it at that time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Uh, if we delayed it, do you have a timeframe in mind, thirty days, ninety days, or would that, should we ask our staff for that?
I haven't really thought about it.
Okay.
Uh, right now, uh, you know, we're meeting with the planning department. Um, we're, we're pulling it out, and we're looking at it, and we're gut-checking to make sure it's okay. Um, how long that takes, you know, I really can't answer that.
Yeah.
You know, I can't speak for them. But, uh, we are excited now to move forward like we were in the past when it became a reality that the city of Green Bay was, you know, gonna get nine hundred more acres and be able to bring up their tax roll, and, and, uh, also the cooperative boundary agreement was something that was, uh, really looked upon as a good thing in the state, two municipalities working together. Uh, so it was, it was a good thing that went on twenty years ago. The town of Scott at that time, uh, the city of Green Bay agreed to, to sell them water at the bulk rate, so they dropped out of that Water Authority-type commission, and, uh, so the town of Scott gets their, their water from the city of Green Bay. And that was all part of the boundary agreement and the, you know, people working together to come up with a plan that's best for everybody.
I'll drink to that. Thanks.
Any other questions, Alder, from other members of council for our resident? Seeing none, we'll go back to, and thank you for your testimony. We'll go back to a resident on Zoom if we have one?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I believe Seth, uh, Lenz would like to speak. If you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Uh, Seth Lenz, N eight eight seven seven, Weller's Lane, uh, Luxembourg, Wisconsin.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Well, thank you, council, for taking the time to let me speak tonight. Um, I'd just like to touch base on a few things, um, that the planning commission, that we discussed in, uh, very, we, very long, a lot of depth, um, and how they came up with their decision a little bit. Um, there are commercial buildings right across the street from this property. Um, this land has been for sale for thirty-plus years, and I think, um, since two thousand and five, the city of Green Bay has not had a single project proposed to along this land. Um, I think one of the biggest things or problems with this parcel right now is, yes, there is water there, but there's no sewer. Um, the cost to get the sewer there is over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, unfortunately, the city does not have the money to, uh, kinda get it pushed through, and I think that's why the current zoning isn't really working for the city. Um, it seems to be the main reason why Joe Moore and why other people have not been... It seems to be the main reason why Joe Morehead and why other people have not built there. That's a big, that's a big price tag to add on top of trying to get a development in that area. You know, this would be, my project would be a good buffer for transferring into the other zoning that's in the area and the resident, residential area. They'll have a low impact, low cost to the city, low, low traffic counts, you know, no heavy equipment like there currently is from the, the commercial properties next door. Now, there are some environmentally sensitive areas along the creek on this parcel too that's caused some problems for other developers that kind of turned away because of that. That's something that'll work for mine, my development. You know, I know a lot of people have been talking about highest and best use along the highway. Obviously, I'd like to have the opportunity to have that highest and best use for my development also. It'll also add some increased tax revenue for the city and the state. And I think one of the biggest concerns that they're talking was other things that could be put here if the light industrial goes through. I think those are pretty low, those concerns, due to the fact that those types of developments would also need the sewer to be able to build. And I think that'd be a big turnoff for them also. There is other light industrial in this area. Some people are calling it spot zoning. But this is an industrial business park. If this development that I'm proposing doesn't work here, I'm not sure if it'd work anywhere for the city of Green Bay. I really like the area. I'm from the area. I've worked with the city of Green Bay on projects. I, I believe I have a very good reputation with them. I do what I say I'm gonna do and hopefully you'll take in consideration approval for this. Thank you. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council? Alder Scannell?
If we did delay this, how would that affect your plans?
Currently, I mean, obviously, I'd like to get it moving as fast as possible. But if it opened up the idea to be able to move forward, open to that, the property owners, I believe, you know, Joe would have to touch base on this. I believe they'd be open to extending our, our offer to purchase. All that's already set up. They do not have any other interest in this property. They've actually never had any other offer on this property. So I think they'd work with me on it. But I, you know, I'd just like to say that we, we talked about this very deeply. You know, a lot of information got passed through the planning commission. I think they got a good idea of, of what we're doing. And I think the recommend, recommendation is a good one. But we'd be able to work with whatever, whatever the city would want to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Storey?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just have one question, Mr. Lenz. Do you sit, I mean, this property's been vacant for some time. What, what is your estimation as far as how long, it's been vacant for how many years?
It's been since they've had it for sale. I think Joe has had it listed for twenty or twenty-five years now through, through Alcital Associates.
So if we had sewer here, there, there could be other development, but right now you're limited to what you can do, correct?
Yes, and I've talked with David Buck and I think I even touched base with Paul Newmeyer a couple times about the sewer and it doesn't seem like the city has obviously the funding to help that, help that project get pushed through, to get the sewer there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions for Mr. Lenz? Alder LaFave?
Hello, sir. Thanks for appearing. I just want to know, according to the price tag that I saw, how many units are you talking about?
We don't really have a, a number yet. I believe the city of Green Bay planning will kind of tell me what we're gonna have to be able to put in there. I'm not sure if there is a per acre number of units, kind of like what you do with apartment buildings. So, I mean, it's very, we're very far out in the concept of this. I mean, this is, a lot of meetings to go still.
But you're talking about a pretty big project, aren't you?
Yes, I mean, obviously, we're gonna try to utilize the area that's available. But it's also supply and demand. I mean, we could put some up and if nobody rents them, what do we do then? We just have to wait out, wait out or see what, see how the economy is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Lenz? All right, seeing none. Thank you, sir. And we'll go back to residents in the room.
Hi, my name is Shannon Sorensen, ten oh five South Clay Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm here with Dan Madigan. We represent seventy-one eighty and own approximately two hundred and twenty acres in the University Heights Business District. We are here in opposition of the spot zoning for the four hundred, the four thousand block of Shampo Road, which is part of the University Heights Business District. University Heights is the last major plot of land in the city of Green Bay and we believe it should be thoughtfully planned out, which is why we have been in discussions with the city of Green Bay Economic Development Department, the Planning Department and Public Works to review the area as a whole. They are currently looking into the best uses for the land as well as reviewing water, sewer and traffic pattern needs to better improve the area. It should also be noted that when this land was annexed over to the city of Green Bay from the town of Scott, a joint planning commission between both municipalities was created to ensure that development benefited both communities. This joint planning committee met recently and voted unanimously against the spot zoning for this parcel. The city of Green Bay Planning Department also recommended against the change. I don't know if David Buck with planning is on the Zoom call, but he could answer further questions on this if he were. Lastly, we feel that this is very rushed. This went to planning last week and landowners weren't notified of it going to city council until Saturday, three days ago when we received a letter in the mail. After speaking with Barb Dorf today, she said that she was unable to attend the planning meeting last week due to overlapping city conflicts, so she wasn't fully aware of what was discussed. For all the above reasons, we feel spot zoning the parcel on the four thousand block of Shampo Road should be put on hold until members of the city's planning department, economic development and public works departments have adequate time to review everything and not make rushed decisions that could have lasting negative impacts on the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yes. Alder Galvin?
Thank you. And how much property do you own?
Two hundred and twenty-ish acres, under seventy-one eighty.
Okay. And when you envision commercial development, I mean, I, I'm thinking back in my head, storage units all over the city, Bellevue, some are mixed in with grocery stores, even some homes, apartment buildings and that. But for you, what, what is the reason that, that makes you not want to allow this to go forward?
Well, it would be rezoned to industrial for these storage units, which is vastly different than commercial use. And industrial also allows for heavy trucks twenty-four hours a day on these roads, unlike commercial where it's kind of spread out or potentially residential. The Economic Development Committee is kind of looking into maybe zoning some of it residential, changing some of it to, they're just looking at the whole area. So changing this one parcel when you haven't reviewed the whole business park seems rushed and I think you could change it and you bring in industrial and you don't have the potential for commercial or residential because no one wants to live next to a storage unit or heavy industrial use.
So, so your concern is this, this could hurt development?
Yes.
And hurt the value of your property?
Yep.
Because you anticipate there, it could go residential.
Could go residential, commercial. It just needs to be looked at and with the city also looking into how to potentially bring water to the area and do other things to improve it, why change this to industrial and make these changes when you haven't looked fully at what could be done to improve the area as a whole and bring in more tax increment?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Additional questions? Seeing none. All right, thanks for your testimony. Any others in the audience or on Zoom on this item? Seeing none, motion? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. I think it would make sense to go to Director Stechschulte at this point, so he can give staff perspective. So with that, Director Stechschulte?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I think many of the points are covered in Mr. Buck's staff report. Unfortunately, he's, I think he's under the weather tonight, so he was not able to join us. But certainly, I believe the, you know, the compatibility of the use, I think, one of the main concerns, certainly from my own perspective, was the, essentially the change in, to the, to the zoning classification, not necessarily against the use itself, but the possibility that for some reason this project did not move forward, the, the potential for other uses that would be approved by this, this zoning district could become more problematic. The, I agree, the, the use itself is probably not a very intensive use compared to what could potentially go there. It is not, certainly not something I, I agree that when you go from a residential standpoint or even another office standpoint or other types of uses, maybe not the ideal use in this area. To me, to have something right on, this is probably the highest and best value in terms of property in this entire interchange area. To have this use, it certainly would be, I think, the, from a tax-based standpoint, would probably be one of the lower uses that we would anticipate that could happen on this spot. Obviously, it is difficult when the landowner has attempted to market it for so, for so long. It is certainly a, a chicken or the egg situation in terms of you can't get the user until you have the infrastructure or it's hard to get the infrastructure until you have the user. So in terms of trying to make that and, and bridge that gap and trying to make that happen is certainly, certainly difficult position for the, the landowner to be in. But it is also how many of these greenfields do generally develop on the edge of, of our city and in other cities. Is that sooner or later that infrastructure does get expanded to that area when there is a, a user that is willing to help either fund that infrastructure or in the case, there was actually a TIF district, I believe, in this area. At one point, it was closed down because of the lack of, of increment and development happening in this. There, there is some possibility for, I think there is an assessment out there that, that would be paid with the development of this land. There, there is that there. That's generally not something that our, our staff would take a look at and consider in terms of an overall land use decision along into the future. This is probably a forty, fifty-plus-year decision in terms of allowing this type of use to get here. The lack of utility connections certainly does not get easier with this use being placed right on that corner in terms of not being a demand user right for that specific location. We did, we do agree that we have had a couple of discussions in terms of looking what the overall use, kind of the actual land use plan for this median area could be in terms of kind of upgrading and clarifying some of the potential land uses as well as our, some of these zoning issues we're taking a look at in terms of kind of updating and modernizing those. We do believe that this property could become more marketable once that effort is, is completed and is there a clear message in terms of what the specific land uses could be for this particular area?
Just on, on that, on that note, real quick, Director, it seems like there was some openness on the part of both parties for a bit of a delay. Could you give us a sense of how much time staff might need between your department, DPW and water to get heads together and, and respond?
I would pro, I guess, just without having a specific scope of work in terms of what we'd be looking at, it's maybe to kind of update land uses and then maybe specifically evaluate some infrastructure needs. I think we could do something in sixty days. I think the land use component is probably the little bit easier aspect in terms of kind of updating the map. But I think the utilities calculation would take some additional time and certainly would defer to Director Grenier in terms of how much time his staff would be able to put towards maybe identifying some of those. But at least initially, I would say sixty days would at least get us some time to do an update on what that plan could be, could look like.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Questions for Director Stechschulte? Alder Galvin?
Thank you. Director, if I understand correctly from what I've heard from other people talking, we have sewer out there?
My understanding is I've, exactly what capacity and what, what its accessibility is, Alder Galvin, I don't know. I would probably defer to Director Grenier on that one specifically. But there, there is, I believe there is some, there is, you know, at least some in the area. It is, but it is not readily accessible, was my understanding.
And who, who would have to pay for that? If it's not accessible or readily available or if it needs to be upgraded, who, who pays for that?
I'd say when, in a perfect world, if the market was doing its, its job, I would say that the, usually the developer would help pay for that improvement out to their own site and essentially take that utility and extend it to the, the, the far end of their property so it was available to connect to the next development once it happened on that area. Now, oftentimes, that is an area of incentive, that needs to be incentivized or in this day and age, oftentimes, financial assistance is requested, that the city would need to do that. Either it would be, there need to be direct borrowing or more, more likely would be done through something like a TIF district to help, so maybe at least the taxes from that particular development would help pay for the extension of those utilities.
And drinking water right now, it's being provided, if I understood correctly, by well water from, from Scott?
That is my understanding, sir, yes.
Could we continue that or would we have to run city water there eventually?
I think it would probably be in the city's interest. Again, I would certainly defer to the water utility, but I think we would like to probably see that become a more, a more formal extension of city, city utilities at this point. I think that my understanding is that this was done as a short-term, short-term solution in terms of providing that. Again, depending on what the land use mix and so forth for that particular area would be, well, depending on what sort of pressures would be needed, what size mains would be needed for the area. But some, yeah, my understanding is that it would be, that was a short-term provision of water, but that would probably be something we would want to extend into the city's system at some point.
Okay. Understanding this gentleman's been trying to sell this property for quite some time and now it looks like he's got a, a bird in hand almost, as opposed to two in the bush. Say we, he gets turned down here. What, what do you anticipate for that land being developed where he could eventually try and make a profit off of it?
Yeah, absolutely. Certainly, Alder Galvin, and we look at it in terms of if we were evaluating simply on, on the, the buildability of, of bird in hand, certainly the land use plan wouldn't necessarily be a very important document. I think it would be overall kind of picture of trying to lay out the development patterns for this entire area. It is certainly want to making sure that we are identifying uses that are compatible with one another and are actually somewhat beneficial to one another. While I agree that this, this particular use being proposed probably wouldn't have a significant use, certainly no utility impact and very little traffic impact. It, it, you know, certainly not exactly something that other development generally wants to locate adjacent to, at least in terms of generating the activity, certainly from a commercial standpoint especially. Residential is probably not, certainly not necessarily benefiting their, the value of those properties and other, other uses, particularly in that area, but not necessarily a harmful one either. If it's done properly and if it's screened properly, so there is certainly a way to do it. I guess my, my own personal opinion, I think Alder Galvin would be, there are probably other areas not right on the intermediate interchange where this type of use would probably be more appropriate. I'm not saying that this use shouldn't locate in this area at all. I think with having that as a primary kind of a commercial gateway right in that median area, it's probably not the highest and best use for that property.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Alder. Alder Storey?
Director, I don't know if you and, and staff talked about?
That is a primary commercial gateway.
Hello? All right, Director, Stechschulte, I just had a question. I was just wondering if you and staff have talked at all about amount of taxes that might, might be collected from a project like this? Has, has anybody on the city side talked about that that you know of?
We certainly have not taken a look at that directly, Alder Storey. That is certainly, just in terms of general terms, we have not actually done a calculation. Just in terms of, we, we know these, these types of uses are generally a lower value per acre than other, other estate commercial or other employment-based uses for sure. But we have not actually done a, a formal calculation on what the difference might be.
Okay, well, that, that's a big thing that, you know, council looks at, you know, we look at amount of taxes that would be collected. I see all, I see Mr. More as his hand raised. I don't know if he would answer, I don't know. The floor is closed now, right? That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Alder Van Der Leest? I'd like to make a motion to hold this for a hundred and twenty days to give the town of Scott, the city of Green Bay and all the property owners a chance to really intervene and, and, you know, address the situation. I think to approve it right now, I think is, you know, not in the best interest of the, of the total project that you're speaking of. It just wouldn't be the best just to move forward with this project. I think a hundred and twenty days, all the owners can come together and the town of Scott, city of Green Bay, and I'm, I'm sure they can come up with at, at least some headway as far as what they want to do with this project. It sounds like it's a massive amount of acreage and I think they want to do it right at, at the very start of it and I, I think we should give them that time.
We have a, just one second. We have a motion on the, on the floor. Is there a second for Alder Van Der Leest's motion? Second for Alder Vanderlyes? Okay. Now, a motion to open the floor? Motion to open the floor has been made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Galvin, and we have Mr. Lenz and Mr. Moore with their hand raised. So go ahead, Mr. Lenz.
Excuse me, Mayor. Did you call for a vote to open the floor?
Oh, no. Good point. All in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Oppose nay, the ayes have it. Floor is open. Mr. Lenz?
I'd just like to point out that we have been working on this for quite some time. My original application for this process was in October 8th of 2021. And we have met with the Town of Scott, and we have met with the City of Green Bay, and we've gone through all of this once already. I don't, you know, obviously, I'm willing to do it, but I just want to state that we have talked about this, and it doesn't seem like they're ready to change anything out there. They've had a meeting back in August about making some adjustments, and from what David Buck stated, they didn't get a very good turnout for that meeting. The people that own the property didn't want to talk to him about it, and the same situation came up, is they talked about the sewer and water issues that are out there, the same thing that's, you know, causing the problems on this parcel. And if the City of Green Bay isn't looking to put this sewer in here, I mean, I don't want to say there's no other uses, but it's been for sale for so long, I think this is a good time to actually take a hard look at this. You know, unfortunately, things do take a really long time to get changed like this when it comes to redoing this whole map, and I think a lot of you are aware of that. There's a lot of red tape and a lot of stuff to go through, and if this makes sense here, I think this is a good night to actually take a hard look at this and move forward if possible, rather than pushing it out further and further, just kind of running in circles. I think we had a good discussion about it, and I believe that the planning commission made a good recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, let me know.
Will do.
Your Honor, there's also Mr. Moore who would like to speak.
Yep, Mr. Moore, go ahead.
Thanks again. Just to address a couple of things. Mr. Lenz did mention, yes, this was October 8th, that this was submitted. It took four months just to get to a committee meeting. And then, of course, now after that meeting happened, we're following our normal processes to get it before the floor here. But I also wanted to just address a couple of things. First, there is water at the site. The current owners of this parcel, this was a much larger parcel that was surveyed and divided into three parcels. They sold one in 2019. Their part of that assessment, in 2019, they made a payment of $48,000. They owe $80,000 on this parcel. When this one does sell and close, that $80,000 would be paid, and they own an additional parcel on Equestrian, which is, I believe, 50-some-thousand. It was in the email that I had sent out. So there is water, and there's definitely water because these owners have been paying for it. And the issue here is with, so look, the people who spoke against it tonight are large landowners, and this 10 acres is isolated from the rest of the development by elevations, by waterways. It's at the end of a dead-end road off of another dead-end road at the furthest southwest corner of the property. So yes, there's high visibility, but it is completely isolated from the rest of the development. It won't have any effect on any of the other projects that may want to happen in the future. And of course, I'm saying in the future because this has been around now since 17 years, 2005, when this plan was developed, this comprehensive plan was developed, and you can see very few projects have happened in 17 years out there. The other point on that is, these large landowners, I'm sure, would not want to see the sale of this land because it is being marketed for only $35,000 per acre. And that, of course, creates precedence for other developers to come in and say, well, this parcel sold for 35K, so this is what we want to pay for yours. So if I owned a lot of land out there, I may not want to see this sale happen either, just because of the comps. The current owners do pay $200 a year to the City of Green Bay. That's their tax bill. Delaying the project doesn't really help anything for two reasons. Number one, there's a purchase contract in place that expires March 31st. The sellers would be willing to extend that for as long as this process takes, but they would also need to do something with the land, lease it out. It's been a cornfield for several years. They would probably have to lease it out to a farmer, which delays this till the end of the summer anyway, and into next spring before development could begin on it. And then, just the other point is that bringing the sewer to the site is necessary, or zoning is necessary. Those are the only two options that are really in place right now. The amendment to the comp plan has to happen because in the restrictive covenants, there are 70 uses listed for what this property can be used for as either mixed use or commercial. Of those 70 uses, only two of them qualify without having sewer at the site, and that is as a parking lot or as a parking structure. And those would require your approval as well. So without a change to the comp plan, you're basically deeming this land to have no value to the seller. So delaying it 120 days-
Excuse me, Mr. Moore, your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing it out. I hope you'll just consider that this land is completely, has no value to the seller without a change.
Thanks, Mr. Moore. A question. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Moore, is there any chance that a trade could be made for this property with other landowners out there, or the city has land that they could trade for this?
I checked with Mr. Buck about other property. The city doesn't own any property that they could trade that is zoned correctly for this project, and he verified that with me through an email. He said, "We own nothing that Seth could develop right now." There's other land that would be zoned for it, but it's not, but it's all owned by private parties.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Alder. Any other questions? For our guest, or a question for the resident? Okay. Motion to close the floor? Motion has been made to close the floor by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Brunet. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, the ayes have it. The floor is closed. Alder Vanderlyes?
Thank you, Mayor. I think if we give them 120 days, I think it's a needed time to really look at this project as far as, you know, the sewer and the water and bringing that up to par so that they can develop this whole site. I think that's very critical. And if they put this other project in front of all this, you know, I think that's why we need the planning to take a harder look at it in the Town of Scott, and to get all the property owners involved and see if they can't make a good decision. And I'd say the 120 days will give the city plenty of time, give all the property owners plenty of time to actually come up to a solution and that the parties would be satisfied. You know, you're not going to satisfy everybody, but I think it's very important to give them that time. That's my motion, as I recalled earlier.
Yep. Thank you, Alder. So we do have a motion to hold item for 120 days. That was seconded, was made by Alder Vanderlyes, seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder, le fave.
Yes, this question is for Director Scheck-Schulte. I wanted to know, on this property, if it goes through zone industrial, how does that affect the other properties around there? Is that also going to kind of complicate them going to commercial, or will that also kind of flip them to industrial?
Director?
We think we need to really take a look at that, Alder. It's a good, that's certainly one of the staff concerns is exactly, you know, again, not necessarily with the use say, but the, I guess, the host of uses that could potentially be used on this site with this zoning classification. Again, without, certainly, those land rights are vested. Once that zoning is established, there is no guarantee in terms of what sort of use. Certainly, obviously, the petitioner is looking very intentionally with a very specific project in this case, but certainly in this day and age, in terms of project financing and other things, you know, that could change. You know, I think, you know, certainly, I think that on Mr. Moore's comments, that, you know, the point, it's the combination of the, it's the combination of the restrictions, the deed restrictions plus the zoning that is creating such a limited factor. So, or the land use. So certainly, while changing the land use is one thing to look at, there's also probably some efforts that probably would need to be taken to look at some of those deed restrictions as well, would certainly be something that we would certainly recommend as part of this process. But the overall impacts to adjacent owners is certainly, I guess, is somewhat up and somewhat questionable at this point, without knowing exactly, you know, seeing a formal set of plan and sort of buffers, what sort of spacing, how many units, what sort of, you know, traffic would be needed. You know, but enough that staff certainly has some concerns over what could be, what impacts could be seen on adjacent properties.
Also, maybe you could let people know what is allowed in industrial, commercial, and residential.
That would probably take another, probably a good hour and a half to go through all the, all the specific uses, Alder. Happy to follow up with that information and to share that afterwards, but probably a pretty lengthy list to cover here publicly here tonight. But I would happily have staff forward that, a memo to council, if that would be your wish to do so.
I think, I mean, I kind of understand it, but sometimes the public does not understand. That's why I asked it.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Thank you, Mayor. So I certainly had no idea that this was going to go on this long. And what's happening is we're doing an awful lot of committee work here in council, which we shouldn't be doing, which speaks to the fact that I think this needs to be delayed, and it needs to be sent back to plan. I would like to make a friendly amendment to your motion, Alder Vanderlyes, and ask that it could go back to plan in 30 days for plan to discuss, and then let plan come up with the suggestion as far as how long the delay really needs to be, because we're doing all kinds of committee work here tonight. Would you accept that?
Alder Vanderlyes?
I'd like to see it delayed so that all the parties can get involved. Now, I think the City of Green Bay should work with the Town of Scott and the property owners, and anyone that's involved that has a stake in this property. And I think the 120 days will give planning, they'll have plenty of time to look at it, and if there's any questions, then they can work together with the municipalities. So I would like to keep the 120 days on the table. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf, I think you still have the floor?
Oh, thank you. Well, in that case, it looks like the, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Moore, and I forget the other gentleman's name, Mr. Lenz, I believe, that will ruin the opportunity for the development for them. So I was looking for something that would be a little more equitable for both sides and hoping to shorten it, but you denied it, so I accept that, and maybe we'll have another motion after your motion. We'll see.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson, and then Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm opposed, well, actually, a couple of questions first. One is, for Director Scheck-Schulte, or perhaps even for legal, I believe I know the answer to this. I want you to corroborate it. Is it possible to add a contingency related to rezoning? Meaning, could a motion be made to rezone contingent on, for example, the storage units being built as opposed to some other type of light industrial use?
My understanding is, Alder Johnson, is that generally not, would not be permissible. I think the zoning has a certain set of vested rights. Once it's awarded, I don't believe it can be restricted through a contingency, at least not through the zoning action itself, either through deed restrictions or other sorts of development agreements perhaps, but I don't believe that can be done through the zoning. But if Turney Bunker has a different position on that, certainly would defer to her.
Turney Bunker?
Right. No, I concur. As Director Scheck-Schulte said, it wouldn't be appropriate to do a specific contingency on the zoning ordinance. It, once the rights are vested, they're vested, and they can't be predicated on anything else. Yes.
Alder?
Yeah, and that was my understanding as well, and I just kind of wanted to correct that because that seems to be one of the concern, been talked about, you know, is that we approve it for this use and then, you know, something else happens there. So one of the other things too, you know, I'm going to oppose the motion to refer, because I'm not convinced that there's anything new that we're going to learn from this. I think this is really more about delaying and stalling. And if you really think about, at the end of the day, it's going to cost a significant amount of money to make that lot more usable. And I remind this body that we prematurely closed that tid, and we were fortunate to be able to transfer that deficit to another overperforming tid. You know, for us to borrow against a tid, to put in infrastructure for which we have no develop-
Oh, no. He froze.
Looks like Alder Johnson is frozen, so we'll return to him.
They know any time to make that request. So I'm just not sure that we're going to get anything out of this other than a delay. So and the other thing I would point out is I'm not sure that this meets the definition of spot zoning.
Alder, we've got a little bit of a rough connection with you. Any others from the council?
If you're okay. So for that, I'm going to oppose the referral.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. A few people that haven't spoken. Alder Gerlach, and then Alder Scannell.
I would just like to check with staff, and I can make it very brief. I read in the packet that staff recommends denying the amendment to the comprehensive plan. And I just want to check with you because now we're talking about delaying, and so I'd like to ask Director Scheck-Schulte and Director Grenier, I don't see anyone from the water utility, but correct me if I'm wrong, I'd just like to hear whether you still prefer that we deny rather than delay.
Director?
I guess certainly from community and economic development, Alder, I believe that our recommendation would still would be to deny at this point. That being said, if we undertake a kind of a look back at the, kind of an update to that land use plan area, and there could be a mutual understanding of changing those adopted plans, then certainly staff would be willing to reevaluate that recommendation at that time. But based on current adopted policy and plan documents, that I believe our recommendation would still remain to be denied.
Anything further, Alder?
Director Grenier?
Director Grenier?
The staff recommendation to plan commission is rooted in the Department of Community and Economic Development, so DPW really doesn't have anything to offer in that regard.
Thanks, Director. Is there anyone from our water utility?
I don't believe so, but I think I can speak on their behalf, and they would be in a similar position to DPW. Again, water currently exists in a location under Shumpel Road and of sufficient quantity, that water is not the issue here. Water is available to the site. It would be the extension of sanitary sewer service that may or may not be the question here.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was initially thinking along Alder Dorf's line that maybe we could shorten this up, but as I understood it right, that even a 30-day delay would, then the owner would need to find other uses, and those uses would actually take them much long, you know, if they rented it out to a farm or whatever, it would take, they would end up going much longer than 30 days anyway. So I don't think it matters, the amount of time. I don't think 30 days is, if you delay it 30 days, that's going to upset the owner's ability to pay off now, and he would have to find other uses. Those uses are going to take longer than a 30-day delay. So it doesn't, it doesn't help him any if we delay 30 days or 120. He's still going to be in the same spot of having to find some other use for that, which will take longer than 30 days for that user to use that property. He'd need it for more than 30 days. So I support the delay, unless I've got that wrong. If you're more, more for more, if I'm wrong, please. Otherwise, I feel like I have to vote no right now. I'd have to, I feel like I'd have to vote no if I had to put the pedal to the metal one way or the other. I think the joint agreement with the Town of Scott, I think that weighs really heavily on me. I feel like we're thumbing our nose at them going forward with this. I really feel that if we took some more time and tried to build some kind of consensus and some kind of plan, and I think, I appreciate that, and, you know, it's taken a long time on this property, even before COVID, but certainly, COVID hasn't helped any with the most recent proposal, I believe. So I think we're coming out of COVID. I think we can take the time to let staff do some work and get together with the property owners, Town of Scott, the, Ms. Moore and Mr. Lenz, and the property owner, and see what can't be amicably worked out. Because right now, I think I would have to vote no, and I don't know that that's necessarily the best vote at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So the motion is 120-day delay. Alder Vanderlyes?
I'd just like to say, Mayor, that the 120 days, it allows all the parties to come together, the city, Town of Scott, and it takes time. You don't get much done in 30 days. Government moves very slow. And I say, give them 120 days, and they can come back, and they say, this is how it's going to be, and we're going to have some communication as far as everybody that's involved. And that's the right way to do it. We're rushing into something. This is a large project. This isn't just a- This isn't just a, it's a large project on the whole spectrum of the, all the property that's involved. So I think that 120 days will give everybody a chance to weigh in. So I'd like the City Council to support the 120 days so our staff and Town of Scott and all the parties can do the right job. Why rush ahead? You know, this is a long-term project. Once they start building, it's a long, it's a long affair to get it all correct. Let's give them that time to do the job. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know 30 seems not enough time, 120 seems like too much. I thought that there had been some talk of maybe 60 days. I don't know, I thought I heard that a little bit as well. Is that something that would be amenable? If I propose 60 days, I make a motion to make it 60 days rather than 120.
You'd like to make an amendment?
Yes.
To the motion? Okay, Alder Stoyer makes a motion to amend, to change it from 120 to 60 days. Is there a second for that? Seeing none, that fails. So we have the motion of 120 days that's still on the floor. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
The ayes-
Board?
Yep, we can certainly use the board. So again, this is a motion to delay this item for 120 days.
Thank you, Alders. You ma- Alder Van der Leest, how would you like to be recorded? Oh, thank you. And Alder Scannell, how would you like to be recorded?
I'd just show a guy in conference.
Okay, thank you. Here is your report.
That motion fails eight to four. So the motion on the floor is approval. Any discussion? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think no matter what we do here, we're going to come back probably with the same decision if we want this particular development to go through here. And if you look at just any overview, you know, Google map it and just do a satellite, satellite view, you're going to see it is in the very corner of the development. It's right next to, I think it's some type of nursery. It's on a double-dead-end road and across the, across the highway is more of the, I'll say similar use, but that entire area is similar. So it's 10 acres about out of 900 acres, so it's 1%. It's 1% of this entire development. And so, you know, do I agree? Probably there is some higher and better use, most likely. Yeah, certainly. But I do know that the property owners here have been waiting 20, 30 years to sell this and they finally have a buyer and we can get some improved tax base. So I'm going to lean towards that and I'm going to lean towards approval, or I will vote for approval. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alderdorf?
I still don't feel that the work has been done sufficiently. I'm going to just vote against it because I would like to see this go back to plan and I would like to see it discussed in committee where it should be discussed. So is that an appropriate motion to make right now, even though the motion to approve is on the floor?
What kind of motion would you like to make?
I would like to say I would move to send this back to plan, to report back to us in April.
Yeah, you can make a motion to refer back?
Okay. I make a motion to refer back to plan.
Seconded.
Made by Alderdorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Discussion on this, the motion to refer this item back to Plan Commission. Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it and that item was referred back to Plan Commission. Now we are on to Report of the Protection and Policy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately?
Four.
Any others?
Five.
Five.
And six.
Four, five, and six? Any others? All right, here, none. Items four, five, and six will be handled separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of items four, five, and six. Your wishes on item four?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Now that item was pulled by-
Alderdorf.
Alderdorf.
And this is the item that we'll be opening the floor for, for those of you that don't have the agenda out there. This is the item on elections that a lot of you are here for. The concern I have with this item is that there are seven-
Alder Weary?
Item number five, that was about the election in general. This is about improvements going forward.
Okay.
So they could be here for either one of those.
And they might be here for that too, but-
Thanks, Alder.
For Alder, item four, just as we spoke about in protection policy last week, there are seven different things under one item. And this, I don't know how to vote on seven different motions that were made in protection policy. I don't believe we can do it with just one vote. So I want some clarification from Legal or from whoever. How do we, how do we vote on this?
I would imagine there, you know, we could have a vote to separate, but Alder, I mean, Attorney Bungert?
Yes, you can do a motion to separate the questions. So you can make a motion to make each individual item a separate item to be discussed and acted on.
Is that the appropriate way to do this?
To split up the item? Yes. If you, if there is an item that's up for discussion and you want to bifurcate or split up that item so, because it entails multiple different parts and you want to be able to consider each part of the item, there would be a motion to split the item.
So I could, I would like to make a motion on part of it because there are, there are three or four things that can be grouped into receiving place on file, which we wouldn't have to necessarily take separately, but is, so am I asking permission to do that? No, just taking each separately? All right, then. Then I'd like to move that we take each of these items separately.
So motion has been made to separate.
Second.
Item four, that was made by Alderdorf, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion on that? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote, if this is a motion on the table, I'm going to vote against it or make a motion to open the floor at this point because the public is not aware perhaps of the seven listed items and they could be talking in a way that incorporates many of the seven in their, in their public comments. So to separate and do one at a time, I would just rather give them the opportunity to address us in ways that the issues may overlap and not put pressure on them to come up every single time.
It'd be appropriate to open the floors.
Okay. Motion, open the floor.
Motion, open the floor, made by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. And then just to reiterate, we're going to try to balance between those who are on Zoom and those who are in person. So we'll do that as best we can.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Yes, Clerk Jeffries, go ahead.
We have a number of people who, excuse me, had submitted comment forms ahead of time.
Okay.
So we do have two people who, whose comments will appear in a minute, but they do not wish to speak. We have Hannah Malmberg, Eric Kuzma, Stephanie Birmingham, who would like to speak and who submitted comments ahead of time, as well as Bill Loving.
Okay. Are all of those individuals on Zoom, the ones who submitted?
So I see Mr. Loving, Ms. Malmberg, and I, on Zoom. So let me just scroll to see if I see anyone else. I don't see any of the other people who had sent in comments ahead of time.
Okay. So what, like I said, according to Law Department, what we're supposed to do here is try to alternate.
Certainly.
So we will, we'll start with those that, maybe the first individual that submitted a comment?
Certainly, that would be Hannah Malmberg.
Okay.
So Ms. Malmberg, can you please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council? I'd just like to remind everyone that there's a three-minute timer. It doesn't seem that the timer you can see in the council chamber, so, but I will set it after you've given your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Malmberg and I live at 1251 Raleigh Street here in Green Bay. So as a citizen of the city, I am deeply concerned by the proposed measures that aim to limit voting access under the guise of making elections quote unquote fair. I must ask, who would benefit from these proposals? Due to increased voting access and resources, the city saw an incredible turnout for the 2020 election. As a immunocompromised person myself, I was able to use the drop boxes to drop off my ballot during this pandemic, so I wouldn't feel as though I had to choose between my health and my right to vote. No one should face barriers to voting, whether that be through having to vote in person when they are disabled, not having voting materials in their language, or simply not even knowing how to register to vote because no one is allowed to help them. Voter navigators help remove many of these barriers by teaching people how to get to the polls or how to request a ballot. This is a nonpartisan role, simply helping share the how-tos of voting. Knowing these things is a privilege that not every resident has, and I think we often take that for granted. Everyone deserves to be able to vote, whether or not you agree with who they choose to vote for, and navigators help them do that. They aren't telling them who to vote for. The city's role is to administer elections and therefore should also be to encourage every resident to vote and ensure equal access to the polls, to voting materials, and to absentee voting, not seeking to limit access. The creation of multilingual resources and encouraging voting for all residents of the city are not, as Alderman Weary claims, targeting certain audiences with similar views of the ones pushing people to the polls. It is a nonpartisan effort to help ensure that everyone has equal access to the polls. As elected officials, I hope you can all see the value in everyone being encouraged to vote. The more people that vote, the more we know that our elections are truly representative of the wants and desires of our residents. That should be an exciting notion for everyone, not one to try to prevent. Alderman Weary questioned at the previous council meeting what a disenfranchised voter is. Voters are disenfranchised when they are prevented or hindered from being able to vote, and if these measures pass, the city will have only created more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malmberg. And now, Mayor, I think you wanted to go to someone in the chambers?
Yes. I don't know if individuals in the chambers filled out the slips.
No, I do not believe they did. I did not receive any this afternoon or this morning, so maybe they did in the council chair. I didn't send them in.
Jesse, you want to have a look at that? With the slips? Just get people to fill them out and then read them off? Yeah. Okay. We invite the first person to approach who would like to speak and then we will try to get the slips out and then we'll go from the slips. And just a reminder to state your name and address before speaking.
My name is Karen Schley. I live at 820 Ethel Avenue in Green Bay on the west side. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay and I have been a poll worker for over 20 years. In the past several months, I have been attending your city council meetings. I have sat quietly and listened with interest to your important discussions. Tonight, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to make a statement to the council. For over 97 years, the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay has helped to facilitate the freedom to vote with all Wisconsinites. Wisconsinites could cast their ballots freely, safely, and equally in our community. The League is not an outside organization, but men and women who are members of the Greater Green Bay community. Our members serve in key election administration roles, from poll workers, special voting deputies, and chief inspectors. We help recruit poll workers, disperse election materials, educate voters in a nonpartisan manner, and find new polling locations. The oversight and transparency of elections is important, is important and always has been in place. Our community trusts our elections. Please do not take action that would prevent the League or its members from participating in the election process and stop a 100-year partnership of community support for safe, fair, and equal elections in Green Bay. For decades, the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay has worked with the City of Green Bay as partners to help people vote, and we are committed to continuing that relationship for the good of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, Your Honor, we next have Eric Kuzma. Mr. Kuzma, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Hi, my name is Eric Kuzma and I live at 1180 Dousman Street in Green Bay. I just wanted to comment on these measures that are on the agenda. It just, to me, it sounds like it's voter suppression. The getting rid of outside funding sources, the ban on hiring of voter navigators, forbidding the city from targeted voter elections, which includes providing multilingual resources, I think is wrong. The right to vote is so important, we should be expanding accessibility to voting. In 2020, we saw an extremely high turnout due to increased and expanded access to voting. You know, regardless of our backgrounds or our zip codes, we deserve the freedom and the right to vote. We should be passing measures that ensure every eligible American can cast a ballot. In 2020, 84% of registered voters cast their ballot and we should be looking to make that number higher, not lower. Just a quick comment on voter navigators. They bring voters to the polls, they assist in finding polling locations, they don't help one political party over the other, they assist everyone. They get people the information they need so they can properly cast their ballots. In regards to funding, you know, municipalities are often under great budget restraints. Outside funds allow voters access to the polls. The pandemic made running elections much more costly and to note, the council already has to accept or reject outside grants, so including this in the proposal is irrelevant since they still have that ability. And then finally, I want to comment on the city's role in elections. The city's role is to administer elections, which includes promoting voting. The city is in charge of administering elections. The role is to ensure that citizens can express their right to vote, and this includes providing all different types of resources for voters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then from inside the council chambers, we have Joe Giganti. And just a reminder, name and address.
My name is Joe Giganti, 1420 Bellevue Street, Green Bay, 54311. So I just want to address the whole question of election integrity. First of all, it's a pleasure to see you in person, Mr. Mayor. Never had the pleasure before. We're 0 for 3 in Green Bay and I'm a little disturbed by, I mean, there's kind of innocuous talk about how things can be fixed or whatever, but I mean, there's no direct accountability that we're seeing in the leadership of the city. The previous administration lasted 16 years. I don't recall there being anything even close to what we've seen in the last three elections. The most recent situation, a blatant violation of law, a storyline that doesn't line up between what the lawyer says, what the city clerk says, and everything else, what's said in the newspaper, and we're sitting here talking about how important elections are, but we can't seem to follow the rule of law. And I wanted, so to me, the simple question is, if we want accountability, if it's true and in April with the primary, yeah, the primary election, you took the mulligan for the debacle that happened with that, and then we had the general election, which if you haven't, and I'd be happy to leave a copy, this is the special counsel's report if you haven't had a chance to look at it. Chapter 11, you figure prominently in that. If I could, on behalf of the taxpayers of the City of Green Bay, of Greater Brown County, of course, which I'm a resident, my motion would be, if we could make it, would be for the resignation. If you truly want to show you want to restore integrity, then I think it's only fair that you, the city clerk, and this chief of staff would resign based just on what happened a few weeks ago, much less the past three elections. There's no other situation where you can continually do it, because it's really two things. There's incompetence involved, horrible incompetence in the last one, or malice, or some variation of the two. Either way, the city, its residents, and the voters deserve better. And that's what I came to say this evening. I appreciate the time. Do you, do you want this, sir?
No, I've got it. We do have questions, questions from Alders. And just a reminder for people in the gallery, you know, we don't allow for outbursts like that, so I'd appreciate people keeping that to a minimum. Alder Scannell?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Swear to God, I will not ask you if you believe in science.
Which I do, of course.
Yes. You mentioned that laws were broken. Which laws were broken and why have they not been reported to the appropriate authorities?
Well, I think that attempt's been made, but in the last one, it's a very clear statute in the state of Wisconsin. You have to post the public time for ballots to be counted. You cannot count outside of that time. The posted time was 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. They began counting at 7:00 a.m. I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory that that's a violation of the law.
Well, had that been reported to the appropriate authorities?
Well, as far as I know, I know Matt Razors here tonight. I know he's tried. I know that when Ben Crumholtz from Fox 11 tried to get accountability that night, he got the dance around, no response from anyone. Then it was in the paper, then the lawyer issued a timeline, none of which actually match up, so I think the attempt's been made. You're a city council member, what have you done to look into it, to get to the bottom of it, and to make sure that it's being reported properly? We have a role, but so do you.
Yeah. A typo is not necessarily...
Sir, really?
You show me evidence that the typo was purposely done to do something shady illegal.
So incompetence or malfeasance, which is it?
Well, that is not breaking the law. You said the law was...
I'm sorry, the law's, I don't recall anywhere in this, sir, you asked the question.
I'm not entering into debate. I'm not entering into debate.
I'm sorry.
I asked a question, and you've answered it, that you haven't reported it to anyone, and that you don't know that a law is broken.
Mr. Giganti, the Alder has the floor.
But can I correct what he just said? He said that there's no provision in the law that says if it's a typo, it's not a violation of law.
No, no, I did not say that.
I know, but you said if it's a typo, that doesn't seem to appear to matter.
This is not a running back and forth. We have testimony, and then we have questions.
Fair enough. Is that all?
Yep, just one question. I wanted to know what the, which law was broken, and why it hasn't been recorded, if that was the case, that's all, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Alder. Any additional questions for our guest?
Anyone?
All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then going back to Zoom.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have Mr. Loving. If you would please unmute. Your address for the council.
It looks like we got some audio issues there.
Yes, I think so. So do you want to go to another person on Zoom or go back to the gallery?
Yep, no, another person from Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll just go on my screen, Natalie Hoffman. If you would please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Hi, my name is Natalie Hoffman, and my address is 1217 Chicago Street in Green Bay, zip code 54301. I just wanted to begin by thanking the council for granting me and everybody else here the opportunity to speak here tonight. I think in the interest of democracy, it's important that we, as members of this community, are able to make our voices heard about the issues that we care about. And with that being said, I would like to express my utmost concern about the proposed election results that, the proposed election resolutions, excuse me, that have been brought forth this evening. I've been a resident of Green Bay for about six years, and I am currently running for the city council in District 4. And speaking from a candidate's perspective, I think that it is incredibly important that we preserve people's freedom to vote and expand the access to do so. It is the city's job to administer elections and ensure citizens are able to express their right to vote, and therefore, the city and the council are absolutely responsible for providing different types of resources so that voting is accessible for every single person without exception. The proposed actions in the agenda would remove some of the expanded voter resources that were available during the 2020 election, and this would significantly restrict future voting access in Green Bay. I would like to turn toward to the 2020 election to highlight the success that Green Bay did see. We saw an 84% turnout of eligible voters returned their ballots because of resources such as the voter navigators, and these people were hired to help residents register to vote, inform them on how to cast absentee ballots, and direct them to the appropriate polling locations. So many folks that may have originally been unaware of this information would have otherwise been unable to vote due to these restrictions. And the money that we got from the grant was also used to provide additional voting equipment and educational resources, including multilingual materials. So these resources weren't provided on a bipartisan basis, but rather, they were resources available to every single person who needed more information in order to cast their ballot, regardless of party alignment. And because we saw such a high turnout rate, I would like to think that this was an incredible democratic success and an outcome that the city council should work to sustain to ensure that every person has the access that they need to make their voice heard in our elections. And in my personal voting experience, I was impressed at how easy it was for me to vote. I had easy access to resources to answer questions and be able to submit an absentee ballot, and even just during last month, during the February primary, I was able to cast my ballot during voting, early voting hours at the clerk's office, and it was incredibly easy and convenient. I was also an organizer doing get out the vote work during the 2020 election season, so I heard firsthand from a lot of people that a lot of people had very similar positive experiences as I did. And this is how voting should be for every single person. It should be convenient, simple, and accessible. We are all members of this community, no matter our race, ability, or zip code, and each and every one of us deserves to have our voices heard during the elections. And in order to achieve this, though, it is absolutely critical that every eligible voter is able to cast a ballot. I urge you, members of the council, to keep this in mind when discussing the measures that would significantly impact people's ability to be able to go vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And back to council chambers, Mr. Razer.
Matt Razer, 419 East La Captain Circle. And I'm hoping that I can take time tonight to kind of tell my story, and the story that has been with our family. And I also want to start by saying I'd like to extend the prayer tonight, Ms. Dorf, to these fine folks out here of the city of Green Bay, along with the city employees as well. So we like to kind of extend everything to everybody. So my story goes back to the April 2020 election. Right before that, prior to COVID, I got dosed some bad news that I had cancer. So I went through a number of treatments, and I was right in the middle of that, and then COVID hit. And it was a really, really troubling time. It was a gut punch for our family. And when I was in the middle of treatment, the 2020 April election happened, and I requested a ballot. My wife got her ballot, I did not get my ballot. So I thought, hey, these National Guard guys are going to be down at East High, I can run down there, and I can vote. From what I understand, the mayor pulled that back, and I, there were no National Guardsmen there, and I was not going to stand in line during the middle of COVID and put myself at risk and try to vote. So when you talk about disenfranchised voters, yeah, I was one of those. I didn't get to vote. I got angry, I got emotional, I got upset, and I thought, this isn't right. This just isn't right. So that summer was really hard, to say the least. And I started paying attention to what was going on. So fast forward to the 2020 presidential election. My wife and I were at home, and my wife has a background in being on the Brown County Ethics Committee, and she was a poll worker for a while. She likes to really understand how things work. So we went down at 5:00 at Central Count to see kind of the process. This is new to all of us, it's new to the council. So we took a look, we walked around, we had our election badges on, or observer badges that we were given, and just, we really just kind of walked around and just kind of saw the process. We're kind of in and out because COVID. But one thing that surprised us is we didn't see a lot of safety measures there at all, as far as Plexiglas, as far as sanitizer. We saw masks, but no social distancing, there was no...
Excuse me, Mr. Razer, your time has expired.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Razer? Alder Weary?
Thank you. Mr. Razer, could you explain to me your experience at Central Count during the 2020 election? Thank you.
So we went down to Central Count twice. So the first time that we went was kind of uneventful. We just kind of took things in and decided to turn back to go home, because we frankly weren't really, I mean, it was in the middle of COVID, and we weren't really comfortable. There was a lot of people that were, the safety measures just weren't there. So in the middle of the night, when the election started kind of turning, at 2:00 in the morning, we decided to go back down, just to see what was going on. So we couldn't really see a lot on TV, so we went down again. And at 2:00 in the morning, I just kind of, you know, we went down and we were told that we were supposed to talk to a certain individual if we had any questions, and that person was Ahmad Rivera. So my wife went up to Ahmad Rivera, and there was another lady that was sitting next to him, and he, he just, he didn't know who we were. He said, who are you, why are you here? He asked us a ton of questions, or asked my wife a ton of questions, started raising his voice. And it was really inappropriate. He was very demanding, really, kind of, and the thing that bothered me about that, I got up, I was sitting actually off to the side, and the level of the exchange was pretty high. It wasn't even an exchange, he was kind of going after my wife. And I walk over, and what alarmed me is that I saw our mayor standing five feet away, I'm hoping that you remember that, Mr. Mayor, and he allowed Ahmad Rivera to treat my wife so poorly and never stepped in and said, I'm the mayor, can I help? What seems to be the problem? What can we help with? Nothing like that. So it was, it really was personal that we were treated so poorly that night. Did we see anything illegal, Brandy? I don't, I don't know. I don't know that I saw anything illegal, but we were treated very, very poorly. And I think that's the track record that this city has, is just how it treats its people, the disrespect. Now, I can tell you that we've had several conversations with Ms. Corpus Dax. She spent hours on the phone with us, listening to our story, and helping us, you know, correct what was, the city actually came out and said what was, like, they accused my wife of lying in a memo. Never, never told her, asked her any questions, but put out an official memo saying that my wife was lying, and they spoke untruths. So I have more to say, but I just want to just put that out there, that, you know, the trust thing is bad, and the city doesn't, the people of this city, I was born and raised here, my dad went to East High, we're residents here, all these people care about the city, that's why they're here, and we don't trust the city, and we want it back, and we want respect in the process.
Any other questions for our guest? Aldo LeFave?
I'm sorry, I hope you're doing well. I had cancer too, so I know how bad cancer is. It's not, it's not fun to go through.
It's horrible.
But I just wanted to know, I'm sorry that your ballot didn't come, your absentee ballot. You know, that's when we were going through, the mail system was just bad at that time. Did you try to, did you try to contact, why didn't you call the clerk, clerk's office to see if you can get a ballot?
I've always, and excuse me because of my, I have a really dry...
Yeah.
Okay. We, I've always been an in-person voter, and I trusted that I would, my son, my oldest son contacted me and said, Dad, don't go, just don't vote. That really bothered me, so I said, Zach, here's the deal. There's going to be these National Guard guys that are going to come up and help me vote. I'm going to sit in line as long, if I can stay in my car, I don't care if I sit there for three hours, but I'll sit there until somebody can help me vote. And there was nothing, nothing, zero. So maybe I was in the, I was in a bad spot, I didn't really know, I mean, I, thinking about voting at that time, because we all had the pleasure of voting in the past, we didn't come up against these unprecedented times, really. So I took it for granted probably a little bit, that I was going to be able to go there, and I said, as long as I can sit in my car, I'll do it. But I didn't get to. And go ahead.
But were you aware that the National Guards, that a lot of, they were not trained? They have to be trained in order to assist in the elections, and my understanding is that they had one that showed up, she was the only one that was, I guess, trained?
I didn't care. I mean, honestly...
I mean, yeah, so I mean, you know, don't say that the mayor pulled them, it's because they weren't trained. They have to be trained in order to work, and the only thing they could do is stand outside and tell people where to go.
Yep.
That's all they could do.
But it was made out to the public, Kathy, that the public could go there and vote. Do you know what I'm saying? It was rainy, I was at Freighter, so I was going back and forth to Milwaukee for treatments and, and, you know, throat surgeries and everything, I mean, it was horrible. So I just didn't think that, to think it through, maybe, but I really thought that if I could sit in my car, that I could vote. But it took that to get me to pay attention. I was just a bland voter. I was, I voted for the president, I didn't really pay attention much to local politics at the time. You know, I, it's weird, because after the 2020 election in the fall, and how Ahmad Rivera treated us so poorly, I contacted the, her name escapes me right now, but I had a conversation with two people, I tried to get ahold of HR, and I said, I want to, we were treated so poorly and threatened that night during this election, that I want something put in Ahmad Rivera's file, you know, personnel file, because if this is a track, I never met this guy. I said, if I'm one of 10 people that have complaints, it should be in his file, and I just want to be that guy. So I coached my whole life, I mentored kids my whole life, I was a coaching director, and if you want to make a move on a coach, you have to have a kind of a track record so you can say, oh, there's a pattern there, and then you can get rid of them. I called Joe Falls months later, and that was never put in his record. It was dismissed. He said, we just can't put those in everybody's records. I mean, if everybody, you know, put together a little something on each of our employees, I mean, we'd have a file, I didn't even understand his comment, to be honest with you. But it was just a track record, and every time that I gave the city an opportunity to redeem itself and say, come on, you know, Mrs. Corpus Dax was the best one that I've had, that she actually listened, and, you know, she was my alder at the time, and then I didn't know any of the other alders, but she gave me the time of day, and gave my wife the time of day, and listened. And this city does a bad job at listening, really bad. And we just want something different, I mean, it shouldn't be this way. And every meeting that I've come to, or my name's come up, or my wife's name came up, it's attack, 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 who are these people? They must be evil Republicans or something, or Trump people. That's a joke. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, this is so clear on what we're, what's in front of us, you know? And then we get in the weeds about, you know, the drop boxes and all this other stuff about, you know, no one's asking for less people to vote. That's a state legislature thing, if you want to take away the ballot drop boxes, that's a chain-of-command issue. That's an easy one for you guys to just say, it's a chain of command. You either give your clerk your ballot, or you mail it. It's federal, or it goes directly to the clerk. That's it. Other than that, it's a state legislature. No one here, or in this chamber, is trying to take that away from anybody. It's black or white right now. If they want to change the law, go change the law, we can't do anything about that here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Additional, appreciate it. Additional questions? Seeing none, back to Zoom. Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Ms. Corpus Dax, again.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe Mr. Loving may be ready to provide his comments. Mr. Loving? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council. Oh my, I think we still have some technical issues. I'm going to go next to Ms. Ivy Summers. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, Summers. Ms. Birmingham did present a comment form, so Ms. Birmingham, can you please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Stephanie Birmingham. I am representing Options for Independent Living, which is located at 555 Country Club Road in Green Bay, 54307. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here virtually with you and to provide public comment this evening. As I had stated, I'm the advocacy coordinator at Options for Independent Living. We are one of eight independent living centers located in the state of Wisconsin, and we are federally mandated to provide various services to individuals with disabilities. As a consumer-driven organization, we believe that people with disabilities have the right to equitable access to full participation and engagement in their community. This includes voting. Therefore, we do not support any efforts that may result in an increase in barriers to voting. Knowledge and education is, and we support efforts by cities throughout the state that help in... that help ensure their residents have the information that they need to be able to know how to vote. Long lines and long distances to ambulate can be a deterrent to vote for some people who are aging or have certain disabilities. Too often, we've heard from consumers who did not know they could request assistance with voting. They didn't know an accessible voting machine even existed, because it was never set up at their polling place. Had difficulty voting curbside, or simply struggled to even get to their voting place. Drop boxes and the provision of information for accessible voting is essential for people in this population, which all of you could become a part of at any point in your life. Whether it's your accident, injury, illness, or if you're lucky enough to live into longer age, you'll acquire a disability through the natural aging process. We all have the right to engage in our civic duty. Please do not take any actions that will jeopardize voting rights for Green Bay's disability and aging communities. In fact, we would welcome the opportunity to engage with common counsel and city staff to ensure that elections are as accessible to all as required by federal law. As common counsel, you have a unique ability to be an example of a city that upholds the right to vote for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. And then, oh yeah, questions? Aldo Galvin.
Thank you for speaking to us tonight, Ms. Birmingham. You, you said drop boxes would be beneficial. And I'm just wondering, with a drop box, you have to drive to it. You have to get out of your vehicle, or you have to have someone with you, you can take that, uh, that ballot and drop it off. As opposed to merely putting it out for the postal person to pick it up and, and take it in. So, you know, I, I mean, I like the drop box outside of City Hall here. I, I used it when I was not trusting of the post office at one point, because of mail that I've gotten returned to me, or that arrived on my doorstep well after the due date for bills and things like that. So I'm just wondering why, you know, how, how can a drop box be more accessible or easy for individuals to use? As opposed to, say, the post office?
Thank you for your question, Aldo Galvin. I don't think it has to be an either or. I think, in fact, it can be, let's make sure we have multiple options on the table to ensure that individuals who have different disabilities, that mean different things at different times. When you think of an individual who has a chronic medical condition, sometimes some days are better than other days. Not always able to predict how a disability may be from, say, today to next week. So I myself have a physical disability. I knock on wood that my wheelchair will remain fully functioning. However, as life and a wheelchair user is well aware of, they know that a wheelchair could break. So I may, you know, have, uh, you know, every intention to do, plan my life as, as one way, but things happen. Same for individuals who have medical conditions that sort of wax and wane. So they might, uh, we, we can't predict how that's going. So it, it doesn't need to be either or, let's just have as many options available. So it doesn't have to become a decision of, oh, I have to use the drop box only, or, oh, I, I have to get it in via mail. Or, oh, I have to go to the polling location. Um, so really, removing the drop boxes is really removing another avenue by which a person can exercise their civic right. If that makes sense.
All right, yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for that great question.
Thanks. Are there any other questions? All right. Uh, Ms. Razor?
Good evening, Polly Razor, 419 East La Captain Circle, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Polly Razor, 419 East La Captain Circle. Um, I'm here to talk about specifically our administration. I understand as much as the mayor office and the clerk's office wants to refer to this as a typo, this isn't about the typo. People make mistakes, people are human. We understand that. It's the decisions that ensued after that. The stories that were told after that, the untruths, the false statements. The inconsistency of information that was given to the WEC by the letter with the clerk, our attorney's office, the mayor to the news, Ahmad Rivera to the news, to the press. The decision to keep counting, even though the public thought that the counting would happen at four o'clock. Based on the fact that absentee ballots can be counted at seven if you properly post. I would agree with that statement. The posting was not properly posted. The public was not properly aware and informed that it would happen, or was happening. She continued, our clerk just continued to decide to continue counting without the public awareness that counting was being completed. There was no attempt at all to make the public aware that voting or ballots were being counted for people who may have wanted to, to go down there if she did make that decision, decision. I disagree with the decision. I have an issue with her deciding to continue to vote even after being aware that the posting was incorrect. I still question whether Ahmad Rivera was informed and knew that that posting was incorrect before the polls opened, based on a statement to the, the press. And so again, it's about the decision that ensued, the inaccuracies and the false statements made to all parties of the press. It shows a considerable disregard to us, our citizens, for the truth and sanctity of our elections, the respect of our citizens from this administration. And this has been a ongoing issue from our point of view, since the November 2020 election, that we started paying attention. This is not a one-time issue. This has been going on and on, and a consistent display of disregard for us citizens, including your text, uh, mayor to the public, which I found very concerning for the lack of care of our elections, and your response to us, that it didn't seem all that important. And so I truly hope we, or the council, can look at really what's happening with the untruths that are told. Ahmad Rivera also has made other statements inappropriately throughout the year that have come to not be true. So truthful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, and now we go to Ivy Summers. Ms. Summers, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Good evening, my name is Ivy Summers. Um, I'm at 1033 Elmore Street, uh, born and raised in this city. Um, and I think it's very, um, important and it's vital to protect our freedom to vote and expand voting accessibility in Green Bay. Mr. Weary's resolution is just another form of voter suppression. Uh, don't be fooled by the dog whistle language that some are offering. Regardless of our color, our zip code, our ability, we all deserve the freedom to vote and move forward together. And we must ensure that every eligible American can cast a ballot. Now, during the 2020 election, we saw engagement of the community, you know, eighty, I think I heard 84% of registered voters cast their ballot in 2020, uh, in the November election. Um, I was able to access my absentee ballot. I didn't want to go to the polls during COVID. I too love to go to the polls and get my sticker and, and engage in my process that way. But because of COVID, I was able to, um, get my absentee ballot. Um, and then I also used the, uh, a voter drop, uh, drop box in my community. However, my elderly mother was not, um, able to do that. Um, she was having difficulty uploading her driver's license to the online request form. Um, so she had to stand outside in the rain and cold, um, for over three hours to cast a ballot on Election Day. Um, I have been able to help my mom navigate voting for the past few years, but for others, that just is, they don't have that support. So voter navigators are crucial to making sure that everyone is eligible, that everyone, that is eligible themselves. Voter navigators exist, everyone, uh, getting to the polls, they play a crucial role in helping everyone have the information they need to cast their ballot. Um, there was a gentleman that spoke earlier that wasn't able to, to get to, to vote. And I think curbside voting would have been really beneficial for him, um, during his cancer treatment. Additionally, grant funding also helps cover the costs of creating and distributing educational materials for our residents. Um, this includes the multicultural material language, um, which I think this proposal will ban. And the council already has, um, to vote to accept or reject outside grants. So this feels like kind of a moot point. Um, despite calls from Weary that voter outreach and election accessibility is not part of the role of the Green Bay, of Green Bay, the city of Green Bay, um, it is, uh, the city is in charge of administering elections and ensuring that citizens are able to express their right to vote, which includes providing all different types of resources for voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Angus?
Good evening, Janet Angus, 1403 Shirley Street, Green Bay. I am here to focus on what happened February 15th. I wasn't there, but I did listen to the Protection and Policy Committee meeting, uh, the other day, which I found very interesting. I heard screaming, I heard condescending remarks made to another alder, and I had eye-rolling going on, because apparently things were just not that important. I thought it was an interesting meeting, in which the public, I don't believe, was treated extremely well. I see the problems with the February 15th election as one of misrepresentations and lies by some staff. I think it's a very unfortunate situation for the city of Green Bay. Did any of you read the cease and desist letter that was handed to Celestine Jeffries on the 15th? Was it a clerical error? If yes, then why did the clerk's office verify to Ryan Ruska the week before the election that the absentee ballot count would be open to the public from 4:00 to 5:00 PM, or until finished? Why did Chief of Staff Rivera Wagner tell the Press Gazette that the city was made aware of the error before the polls even opened? And had reached out to the WEC seeking advice? And Rivera told the Press Gazette that the commission gave the go-ahead, to go ahead with the ballot processing and counting? Alder Scannell, the statute that is quoted in the cease and desist demand letter is 71512. It says, "Your assertions are incorrect, and your early processing of absentee ballots is in direct contravention of the notice, Wisconsin law, and applicable administrative guidance." As you presumably know, Wisconsin statute 7151D requires you to prepare the necessary notices and publications in connection with the conduct of elections or registrations. The purpose of the statute is to inform and advise the public as to election day conduct in the event public citizens wish to observe the process. As it currently stands, the city of Green Bay's early processing of absentee ballots gives rise to a strong inference that you are attempting to circumvent public inspection, which undermines the public's confidence in absentee ballot processing. Accordingly, this letter demands that you cease and desist the early processing of absentee ballots. Failure to comply with this demand may expose you and your office to legal action. So, I have a question. Obviously, the people at the Protection and Policy Committee meeting, met some of the alders, felt this was a typographical error. The mayor asks for giving decency a try. Everyone deserves a little grace. And yes, we need some decency. The staff members who lie need to be held accountable to the public. This time, the staff members got caught in their lies. Very publicly got caught in not providing notice and in lying to the Press Gazette. And then also misrepresenting what the WEC told them they could do or could not do. How long are you, every one of you sitting here, the employers of this staff? How long are you going to?
Ms. Angus, your time has expired.
How long are you going to put up with this? It makes the rest of the wonderful people who work for the city of Green Bay look bad, and sends a message that misrepresentation, lies, and mistakes are acceptable in our city government.
Ms. Angus, your time has expired.
Hang on, let's just talk.
Glad I shortened, shortened what I was going to say. Three minutes isn't enough to go over whatever thing that happened, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Could I get a little additional time?
How do you do? I didn't know they were going to talk about it.
Why are you going to start taping while you're listening?
Any questions for Ms. Angus? All right, back to Zoom. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Your Honor, and next we have Ned Dorff.
One second, Clerk Jeffries.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yep, we have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Angus, for coming tonight. If you were to speak longer, what, what would you talk about? What were the topics you wanted to hit?
Alder, Alder, it just, it needs to be.
This is a valid question. I want to know what she would have talked about.
It needs to be a bit more specific than that, Alder.
I, I don't know what it is, so I'm asking.
Then it's not an acceptable question.
I'm sorry, I can't ask you questions.
I'm sorry too, because with transparency, I guess that's what our city government is all about these days, closed doors and no transparency. I thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you.
I would ask for leniency tonight, because the counter's not working, so people don't know how much more time they have. My question was, what else did she want to bring up? Just in brief, it could have took 10 seconds. 10 seconds to tell us what else she wanted to talk about. I understand you have busy, busy lives, you need to be somewhere, but, sorry, Janet.
What more important is that?
Alder Stoyer?
Take your head. Does she come back? No, I'll be specific.
10 quick seconds.
Mr. Mayor, put the cursing, please.
Maybe I should talk about that.
Alder Stoyer?
It's all right. I can address this with the public another time. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your cooperation and your candor.
Ms. Angus, I had a question.
Yes.
Okay, you were, you were privy to the four and a half hour meeting at, at Protection and Policy.
Yes.
It was a tough meeting. You know, I got a little emotional. And I think it wasn't for the lack of talking about all the different issues that were out there. Did you feel that there were some things that just weren't dealt with at that meeting? I mean, we did cover all seven points. We referred a, a number of these back to committee, or back to staff to look at, and come up with some better solutions. Those first three items here, we referred back, and we're, and these other three we're discussing. So, did you feel that the committee did a decent job at least getting the, the word out and talking about it? Or did you feel that there was more stonewalling?
I did not speak at the committee meeting, because I felt that the issues were handled appropriately. And I appreciate your being the kind and gentlemanly moderator that you were. However, there were, I, I think everybody in the council should listen to that meeting. And they should look at how people treated speakers. That's why we have an ethics code. Alder Stevens, you did a great job. I can say that for everybody at the meeting.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Thanks, Aldo. Aldo Burnett?
Um, thank you, Ms. Agnes. I do have a question. If you don't mind me saying publicly that you're an attorney?
Yes.
I just did.
For many years.
Okay.
Not an election law attorney, though.
You were speaking of the February 15th election, and made a comment almost entirely about that election. Based on your understanding of state statute, is it your opinion as an attorney or a citizen that the city violated state statutes and how we administer the counting of absentee ballots?
On February 15th? I think the notice was in violation. And I think that a, a good administration would have stopped the counting as soon as they realized the notice was inaccurate, and would have started up again at four o'clock. I think that was the thing that would have been election integrity. I think that that would have allowed me to feel that observers were present to make sure that there were no issues involved in the counting of the ballots. And, and, and that's what was supposed to happen. Notice was given. If it's a wrong notice, then you know what? You own your, your typographical error, whatever it is. And you say, you know what? You own your, your typographical error, whatever it is, and you say, you know what? I put down 4:00. I guess we have to wait till 4:00, and if it goes till 10:00, it goes till 10:00. But when you give notice to the public that they have the right to show up and to observe, that's our ballot box. That's the most important thing, the right to vote. You know, my ancestors fought for this country in the Revolutionary War, all the way through. My dad was a battalion surgeon in Korea. And I take my right to vote very seriously, as we all should. And everybody who has the right to vote legally, I guess, the lack of, I'm not sure of the terminology to use, should have access to the ballot box. But we have to make sure that it's done appropriately and notice is given, and our state statutes are followed, because that's what they're there for. And if you don't like the requirements of the state statutes, whether it's curing ballots or whatever it is, then go change the law with the state. The state. Otherwise, our clerk's office needs to follow the rules and our state statutes. You can't just make arbitrary decisions and treat people respectfully, for heaven's sakes. That's the other thing. Shame on some of you alders for the way you yelled on the Protection and Policy Committee meeting the other night at speakers. It was discouraging. Not that I'm here to chastise anybody, but everyone should listen to that meeting, including you, Alder Scannell. Just my opinion.
No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And now we go to Ned Dorff. Mr. Dorff, can you please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council?
Ned Dorff, 1321 Emily Street. Thank you. I'd like to speak item to item on the, on the actual agenda item here. I'm a regular voter. I vote every primary, every general election. I've also served as an election volunteer, as have many of those present tonight. And, and I just want to go item by item here. On item number one, I think disconnecting voting machines sounds reasonable to me as a layperson, disconnected from the internet. I don't believe that ours are connected to the internet. Item two, I'd like to hear the discussion on that. I don't have a strong opinion either way on that one. Item three, as far as drop boxes, they do provide accessibility for voters who may have job, childcare, or mobility complications. And if they are allowed again by law, please employ them. Many of us who worried about the speed of the mail service in 2020 used those boxes. Oh, you're my dog, pardon me. Item number four seems to be an overbroad request. I'm wondering, does this include any potential money coming into the city to increase voter access or educational efforts about the voting process? What is the council specifically looking to disallow here? I'd like to see some more specifics on that one. Item five, voter navigators was that short-term city employee situation dedicated to helping people navigate the absentee voting process, helping them through the pandemic voting procedures. That seemed to be a one-time thing. It seemed to be a helpful thing. If we are ever in that position again, I hope we would employ people to, to help voters get their, get their vote counted. Item six, we have many pockets of the city with low voter turnout, and personally, I believe democracy thrives when more people are involved, especially here at the local level. I think it would make sense to put out general get-out-the-vote information, as well as targeted information to areas or populations who may have trouble navigating the system. The system, you know, it's, it's easy for some to navigate, it's not easy for others to navigate. Item seven, again, seems very broad for a communication, but I appreciate the sentiment of seeking input. As a citizen, I would say promote multiple modes of voting, voting by mail, early in-person absentee voting, no-excuse absentee voting, secure drop boxes, of course, in-person voting on Election Day. I'd love the city to investigate other ways to expand democracy through ranked choice or instant runoff voting. I appreciate the city being innovative, meeting people in their vehicles in fall of 2020. I appreciate the way the mayor and some at the state level tried to delay the April 2020 vote so we could better, better navigate the pandemic. And I was dismayed when our state legislature took no action to help cities like ours in working through the challenges of that election. I hope that we, as a city, provide many formats for voting in the future, so we never find ourselves in the position again of standing in line for hours to vote. We do run fair elections in Green Bay, thanks to the work of poll workers, volunteers, staff. We have had no cases of fraud, no broken laws by election officials, despite frequent allegations. And I think the residents of our city deserve better than the tired narratives we keep hearing about failed elections and broken laws. As a previous speaker stated, everyone who has the right to vote should have access to the ballot box. So to the members of council voting tonight, please always vote in favor of increasing the franchise. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ned, it's always good to see you. Former Alderman Dorff, we used to sit by each other, so I value your opinion. You're a good guy. I think you know how council works, right? Things go to committee, which it just went to last week, gets hashed out a little bit. And as you saw out of those seven items, three of them are referred to staff for more information to be brought back and discussed more in depth. So, and you know that, right? So there's really no solid action tonight, other than gathering information from what you can see. Does that, does that look right to you? Ned?
I feel that the, the request to refer to staff to investigate, research, and report a request excluding outside money and advisors for elections seems to be pretty much of an overbroad request, and I guess I would have liked to see something more specific.
Certainly. I think committee wasn't sure where to go, so they wanted as much information as possible. And number seven was on there for comments and suggestions, and you had some, which is excellent. That's what we want, and I'm glad. That's, we want more input on elections, and you just gave it, and I'm appreciative of that. So, thank you.
I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate the sentiment of seeking input. I think that Alder should always be doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dorff. Any other questions?
Good evening. My name is Sandy Duckett. I live at 2552 Wilder Court, and I'm here to talk about the February election and then also the, the August of 2020 and November of 2020. Just to clarify a few things. I went to vote at our Ward 2, or District 2, Ward 8, in our new location, which was out on Finger Road. And I got there at 8:30 in the morning. The vote, the election machines weren't working. 8:30 in the morning, the election machine was not working, and I was told, if you want to wait and put your own ballot in the box, the city's supposed to be coming soon to do that. I waited for about 15, 20 minutes. Maybe instead of looking at the ballots, the absentee ballots, we would have been ensuring that the election machines were working. One of the challenges, one of the, the responsibilities as being a, a person who works on the elections is to make sure the day before that all the election machines are working. In August of 2020, we were part of the Sears Building, and I was a chief inspector for the August election. Myself and another individual who's here tonight, we were there to make sure that our machines are working. Half the power in the building wasn't working. Wouldn't that be something that we should investigate before we request using a building that is not, is unoccupied? Shouldn't the city have done its homework ahead of time and ensured that there was power for that building? You talked about the, the National Guard. We had National Guard people there in August, and I asked one of the National Guard individuals, I said, "What was your training like for an election?" He said, "We went through three weeks, three weeks of training on how to administer an election." Those National Guard people were probably better prepared than some of the people who worked at the, at the polls. On the November poll, I had three election navigators in my ward, and I had to tell them twice to stop talking about politics, to stop talking about party politics. These are simple things. In the late 90s, I had the honor to work for the city of Green Bay. I was Director of Economic Development. I sat at these council meetings, and I ensured that our job and responsibilities were taken seriously. I cannot believe the problems that we have seen and the inappropriate responses, the disregard for citizens, and the disregard for all of us to want to have fair elections. Perception is reality in people's minds. Nobody wants to stop people from electing, but the responsibility to administer the election is to administer the election from the city. The Chamber of Commerce has the get-out-the-vote, you have the League of Women Voting, it is not the city's obligation to hire navigators. That is not their role. And speaking of grant money, because I wrote a lot of grants, we brought in $15 million for the college. I never saw a grant where you were paid $10,000 upfront to write the grant, and then the grant scope of project was done after.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. Your time has expired.
Thank you for your time. Any questions? Thank you.
Alder Corpus Dax? Sure. Five-minute bathroom break. All right, we are back in session. Not sure if Clerk Jeffries is back quite yet, but I'm going to go to...
Yes, I am here, Your Honor.
All right, let's go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Renee Gash. Please, Ms. Gash, unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Hello, everyone. My name is Renee Gash, and I live in DePere, but I'm sorry, I do not feel safe giving out my address. I'm the Chair of the Democratic Party of Brown County, and unfortunately, we've received death threats over these conspiracies that we somehow stole the 2020 election. So I'm here to speak against Alder Weary's resolution. And although I vote in DePere, I observed early voting in Green Bay during the...
Just one second, Ms. Gash. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, are we allowed not to give an address? I just, if we are, fine, I've never heard of that before.
Attorney Bungert?
If you, it's fine, I just never heard of that.
For my safety, I'd ask that I could not give my address.
It doesn't necessarily have to, it doesn't necessarily have to be a residential address, just some sort of address to indicate location. So if there's a business address or something that can be provided.
I can give the Democratic Party of Brown County address, which is 118 South Chestnut Avenue in Green Bay. Would that suffice?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, they've threatened my children, so I'm not giving out my address. I'm here to speak against Alder Weary's resolution. Although I vote in DePere, I observed early voting in Green Bay during the 2020 election, unofficially, when I helped my sister navigate the early voting system. And I was an official observer, registered observer, on behalf of the Democratic Party of Wisconsin during the spring 2022 primary just two weeks ago. And I was one of five people in a bipartisan group observing the Green Bay Central Count on February 15th. In the fall 2020 and the four elections since, I observed very well-run, organized, and transparent elections. The 2020 election in particular was incredible. More than 80% of voters turned out, Democratic voters, Republican voters, independent and third-party voters. And regardless of which party you support, that is remarkable, and our election staff deserved to be celebrated and commended. And so does the city council, who secured funding to make that election safe, fair, and free for all voters, when the state legislature didn't show up with the funds to make that election safe. And even though Democrats won only one race in the entire county, which wasn't even Joe Biden's race, I still trust the results because I trust the civil servants who've shown their commitment to our community time and time again. And I trust the institutions which have thoroughly, thoroughly reviewed the results and have repeatedly found them to be accurate. In the spring 2022 primary on February 15th, I showed up to observe the Central Count at 6:00 p.m., which was ample time to observe the counting of the few hundred votes that were cast in the election. I heard later that people had very big feelings about a typo, and those of us who were actually in the room observing had no issues. What I do take issue with, and I am more concerned about, is the constant browbeating and dog whistle racism towards BI PAC city staff. And I would ask that our city council members stand up for our city staff. One of the things we do as party volunteers is we run get-out-the-vote campaigns and help our members navigate the voting systems. Now, if the city council bans public vote navigators and get-out-the-vote efforts by the city, that means it's the parties, the nonprofit organizations in the PACs who are going to be the main groups doing this work. And I would argue that it is better to have public people, public navigators with public oversight, running these types of operations for the city, so that voters have someone who is nonpartisan with public oversight to go to, to ask questions of voters. I think it's more important to have these folks available for navigation instead of those of us with special interests. So in conclusion, I would ask you to vote against this resolution and to support our election staff, who are doing very noble work under incredibly difficult circumstances over the last two years. And I thank you all for your service to the community. We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we will go to Kathy Marchand.
I'm Kathy Marchand, and I guess I don't want to give out my address either because I fear what may happen.
So what, what was done with our previous speaker was a business address that was given?
Oh, you give a business address? Okay. Let's see.
118 South Chestnut is what you should give.
118 South Chestnut.
Well, that's obviously not a proper address, because that was the address that was given for the previous speaker. You're a volunteer with the Democratic Party of Green Bay. You have an address to give us?
900 South Webster, Green Bay. Okay, I just had a question I wanted to ask. Now, 2020, I went and I voted. I voted in 2020, and I checked my election record. It said that I voted absentee. It said that I voted at the Wildlife Sanctuary. I did not vote absentee. I voted in person, and I voted at the City Hall. Also, there was a change with the group that was doing the elections, and I was wondering about that. Why did we have that change? Because I never saw anywhere where it was explained why we had that change of the group that handled the election at the City Hall. And also, there was another question that I had, is why were we handing ballots to people instead of putting them in a box? Is that something normal? Is that something we usually do? And that's what I have for you.
All right, thank you. Clerk Jeffries?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And next we have, it says Diana Walter. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Good evening. I'm Diane Dahmler, 3015 Bayview Drive in Green Bay. Thank you for allowing my input this evening. The right to vote, essential to a well-functioning democracy, is a most enshrined right in the Constitution, is protected by five separate amendments. I'm proud to say I have voted in all November elections since 1975. I've voted in both urban and rural areas. I've had to register on the day of voting. I voted using an absentee ballot. Sometimes it took mere minutes to vote, and other times I stood in line for hours. I take voting very seriously, and I'm very concerned about the misinformation about the 2020 election. So after online and onsite training and studying 100 pages of voting rules and procedures, I'm now... I'm now a chief inspector for the City of Green Bay. During the 2020 election cycle, I was acutely aware of the increase in much-needed voter information being conveyed various ways and the use of voter navigators. I certainly appreciate the time spent of the volunteers and our city employees, as well as the money that came from the city and our outside groups to support voting. The work was done so people would know how, when, and where to register and where to vote. Anytime we, as citizens, can make the voting process easier, safer, and more accessible, we'll only shore up our fundamental right to vote. I am in total agreement that funds and resources are a necessity to guarantee that folks eligible and able to vote can cast their vote unhindered. It is the City of Green Bay's leadership's responsibility to ensure and protect the right of voting. This will happen by one, adding more ballot boxes as voters are increasingly choosing absentee voting. Two, increasing the time allowed to count absentee ballots prior to Election Day. Three, allow ballots having an Election Day postmark but received after the date to be counted. Four, make available varying types of voting information for voters. Five, supply voter assistants and navigators. And lastly, increase the number of polling locations to reduce those long lines and add convenience to those voting. Of course, cold hard cash is needed to effectively implement many of these elements. The city leadership job is to ensure adequate funds and supplies are designated and distributed for elections, as well as to ensure that appropriate controls are in place to support voting integrity. It should make no difference whether the funds are acquired through taxation or cost-cutting and other budgetary areas, or that funds are received by outside government sources in order to maintain and enhance voting. One can only imagine what positive feedback the City of Green Bay will receive when voters learn of the above strategies put forth by the council that will support and not impede every eligible Green Bay citizen's right to cast their ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Hi, my name is Jason Corbus. I live at 1130 Broadway. My concerns are a little bit different than everybody else's. I have a concern because Act Blue, through the Black Lives Matter website donation link, it goes straight to Act Blue. That's Democrats. How is it Democrats are allowed to hijack the black vote? I just want to know that. Another thing, Facebook is censoring conservatives.
Sir, if you could just keep your comments to things that are relevant to the City of Green Bay?
Okay. Well, we have a Portland police chief here in Green Bay now. That's kind of concerning to me. We have a police and fire, police and fire city council making decisions, but not on WEC and Rubenstein. We have $2.3 million coming from Civic and Tech, Civic for Tech and Civic Life, which is that a grant or is that a bribe? I mean, I'm just wondering. We had 95 to 100% in nursing homes. Typically, we do 90%. How do we get 100% turnout in nursing homes? 100%? Come on. You guys know better than that. I guess my other concern is we allow methadone clinics right here in Green Bay.
Again, sir, just things that are on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Well, that's pretty much all I have in my list.
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Clerk Jeffries?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Next, we have Sandy Juno. Ms. Juno, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Hi, Sandy Juno, 616 Dauphin Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Good evening, council members and whoever else is watching. I do have opinions on what had happened in the 2020 elections, but I'm not going to address that tonight. I thought that was history, that was behind us. Since the 2020 elections, I have retired from being the county clerk. However, I am still election integrity activist. And as part of that, I'm working with the Republican Party to help train and educate interested people to be observers at polling locations or Central Count. As part of this effort, I was working with a coordinator who took care of contacting City Hall and arranging times with people interested in being observers. So prior to the February 15th election, there was three contacts made with the city clerk's office. The first one, on February 2nd, the coordinator called City Hall because there was no notice posted regarding absentee ballot processing on the city's website. So that was a concern. But then he also asked about the number of observers that could be at Central Count. And at that time, he was transferred to Celestine Jeffries. They had a discussion, and she thought the number that he had presented was too many, and agreement was reached that he would limit it to four or five from our party. On February 9th, the coordinator called City Hall again because there still was no notice posted online about the start time for processing absentee ballots at Central Count. The staff person did not know why it wasn't posted. So the coordinator called back on February 10th. He had found the absentee ballot Central Count processing notice on the city's website, but he called the city clerk's office to confirm the time, the start time, which was listed as 4:00 PM. And he wanted to know if that was correct. And the staff confirmed that if it says it on the website, it's accurate. So as a result, coordinator then had to reschedule all of our observers from arriving at 7:00 AM to a start time at 4:00 PM based on the verbal and written notice. We thought everything was set. And then, on Election Day, I got a call from Matt Razor, who had some questions, because he noticed on the door it said Central Count processing time began at 4:00, and he happened to be there early in the morning, and when he went up to the fourth floor, they were already processing absentee ballots. And his question to me was, well, can they do that? Well, no, they can't do that. They've noticed publicly the start time was... But for whatever reason, Clerk Jeffries and whoever else was involved in that conversation decided to go ahead and do it anyway. Now, that is...
Thank you, Ms. Juno. Your time has expired.
Any questions?
Nope, no problem.
Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none.
Hi, I'm Kimber Rollin. I live at 115 East Walnut Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I would like to ask, first of all, whether the council has been briefed on the Ethics Complaint that I filed in November of 2020 against Mayor Genrich for allowing a man from New York to be at Central Count and help run Central Count and do various inappropriate things at Central Count during that November 2020 election. Not sure if the council, if the Ethics Committee falls under the council, the common council or not. I'm thinking that you probably do, and I'm wondering how many of you are aware of everything that's transpired from the initial filing of my complaint in November 2020 up to the last hearing that I had on February 3rd, which is almost two months now, where I have not received a response yet from the Ethics Committee, where the mayor wants the complaint dismissed. So it's been two months since that last hearing, and I've had several hearings about a file this thick of paperwork that I've spent time preparing away from my family and my grandchildren, and why there hasn't been a response yet from February 3rd. This isn't...
Ma'am, if you have a general question...
No, this is an election integrity issue, and that's what I believe we are talking about tonight. And I want to know what the council plans to do going forward regarding that complaint that I filed.
Ma'am, if you have a general question about the...
That's my general question. What is the council going to do?
About the operation of the Ethics Committee?
Okay.
We could pose that question to our city attorney.
I want to know what the council is going to do regarding my complaint and how they're working or not working, or whatever it is with the Ethics Committee.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Attorney Bungert, if you could just explain how the Ethics Committee works?
Oh, 23 seconds? A man from New York, okay, paid for through Zuckerberg monies, some grant, okay? It's inappropriate. Shouldn't have been allowed. It was wrong. It was wrong. Now, I'm running for Brown County District Board Supervisor for District 8, and this might jeopardize my ability to win that election. So be it. So be it. Okay, I've given it a lot of thought to coming up here and speaking like this, and took a lot of guts for me to do this, and there needs to be some action taken regarding our mayor and the other two people that have been mentioned numerous times here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Your time has expired.
Attorney Bungert?
Yes, sure. So the city attorney's office is conflicted out of representing the Ethics Board, but my understanding is that the Ethics Board did have their hearing. They deliberated with instructions to outside counsel, Attorney Mike May, to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law. So then, another hearing will be scheduled to present those findings of fact and conclusions of law and to vote and approve those, which should have the board's decision on the matter. Then, those findings of fact and conclusions of law will be sent to all the parties, and then depending on what comes out of the Ethics Board, it may or may not go to council for review in accordance with what our ordinances provide.
Okay. Thanks, Attorney Bungert. Back to you, Clerk Jeffries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next, we have Wendy Coriel. Ms. Coriel, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Wendy Coriel, 927 First Street, Menominee, Michigan.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to talk about weed, but I had to jump in to defend a friend's character, and I definitely had to jump in after seeing Alderman Scannell legit debate a member of the public. But first, a quick hello to all the people I miss. I've known Chris Weary since 2007. We were not always on the same side of an issue, but over the years, he's become a friend, regardless of Celestine Jeffries once telling me that would never happen many years ago. So much a friend that last summer, when I had a severe MS relapse that impacted my brain stem and left me unable to swallow, unable to do simple tasks without any help from family, he donated funds so I could pay for help. Then a door opened to this beautiful apartment that I live in in Menominee, Michigan now, with the central air required for my advanced case of MS and the legal medicine that helps me with my disease. He physically moved me to freedom. He saved me, twice. For all the crap that I've given him over the years, he saved my life. Alderman Weary would never do anything to prevent people with disabilities from voting, and he certainly did not deserve how he was treated at protection and policy. The way Alder Gerle attacked him was disgusting. Alderman Scannell perfectly illustrated the vibe of this administration when he proceeded to talk over a member of the public and engage in debate. Tyrannical. I've watched and covered this council for quite some time, and speaking of voter suppression, I watched the primary election in 2020 attempted to be canceled, then the number of polling places shrunk. That's voter suppression. Then there was the Facebook executive thing that the last speaker just talked about, and then the latest primary. But by all means, attack Alderman Weary over a piece of paper that was not even legal to be posted. Your three should resign immediately. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions from Ms. Coriel? All right, then we have Mr. Terry Lee.
He's in the hallway. Hi, Terry Lee, 1105 LaCount Road, Alderman Burnett. Nice to see you. It's been a while. Thank you for letting me speak here. Obviously, important items here. The first three items, just to recap, though, have been referred to city staff, correct? The first three?
Pending action tonight.
Pending action. All right, okay. Well, just a few things here. Just number three is a big thing for me. Receiving place on file regarding a request to discontinue drop boxes. You know, these, I think, I believe, are very important to ensure people have access to drop their ballots off at their convenience and leisure. I was able to utilize the ballot box in the spring of 2020 for my primary, because my ballot, even though I had requested it a month before, did not arrive until primary day. And I didn't want to risk going to the polls, so it was important for us to vote, so me and my fiance were able to both vote and drop off our ballots. So at City Hall here, so it was great to do that. Number four here is also a research and report regarding requesting excluding any outside money or advisors. The grant money obviously was received along with dozens of other communities across the state to help increase pay for poll workers at a time when the need was great for poll workers. Many of our poll workers are elderly and did not feel safe. That increased pay helped us lure in and entice new poll workers to fill some of those gaps, so that was important. So please keep that in mind regarding that, because we didn't see a lot of help from the state or at a local level here as well. So number five here was also to regarding to voter navigators. I could skip over that. Next one here is number six here. I worked the polls for the first time in February as an affiliated Democratic poll worker, as election inspector, formal title there. And there was about 10 out of 35 voters who came in thinking they had an election that day. They came to the polls thinking that they had to vote, and they did not. We took a moment to educate them and guide them to when and where they would vote. Many didn't know that they didn't have to vote because of recent redistricting. Voter education is key to participation in our civics, and keeping the public informed is crucial to ensure things are easy and convenient, and I believe it's the role of our local governments to encourage and participate in their government. Just like any corporation advertises to buy their product, we should do the same as city government. So making sure that things are safe and secure is always important when it comes to that. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Couple left on Zoom, looks like.
Yes, Your Honor. We have next Casey Hicks. Mr. Hicks, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Casey Hicks. I live on 1019 Emily Street, Green Bay.
Sorry. Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I'm urging the council not to support the proposed changes to Green Bay's elections before them tonight. All of these proposals would severely kneecap the city's ability to carry out successful elections in the future. The 2020 election saw an historic 84% turnout. That level of turnout and success could not have happened in the middle of a pandemic without robust voter education, help from voter navigators, especially acting poll workers when the need was high for them, and the city receiving much-needed funding for personal protection equipment, hiring more poll workers, along doing a whole host of other things that made it easier to vote for folks. I often hear members of the council saying that they'd like to see more people engage in... I often hear members of the council saying that they'd like to see more people engaged in local government. And even Alder Burnett was giving people kudos at the beginning of the meeting for turningouts. But involved citizens don't just come into being. They need to be civically engaged. And more importantly, they need to be invited to the process. So it's in the interest of the council and our community that the city is taking an active role in educating current and future eligible voters on how to cast their ballot, no matter who it's for, what part of the city they're from, or who they identify as. I also truly question what data is being used to say that the city was targeting specific voters with certain viewpoints, as was laid out in the proposal. Because I believe the opposite was true in that the city's voter education program helped voters navigate the polls, no matter what their views were. For example, if this proposal were passed and the city did not partake in voter education, it could mean that the clerk's office couldn't share materials to educate voters who are disabled on how to curbside vote. If it were passed, it could mean the city clerk's office couldn't create multilingual educational materials, many other speakers have already said. And before creating the voter navigator positions, it's important to remember how hard pressed the city was for poll workers. And if the city had not had those voter navigator positions, it likely wouldn't have been able adequately staff polling locations. And we would have been in the same situation we found ourselves in April 2020. So those positions not only helped the city clerk on Election Day, but they can help the clerk answer questions coming into the office to help more people if they're having a hard time knowing how to navigate the process. In fact, I met a gentleman in 2020 who may not have been able to vote had it not been for a voter navigator he contacted who provided him educational material that was in among, because English was not his first language. So that could have been a voter that easily couldn't have cast a vote had that not been there. We should also make sure that we're not tying the hands of future councils and accepting money for election administration. The city was in a very dire predicament in 2020 when there was not assistance or funding come from the state to help fill gaps that showed up because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And if the city found itself in a similar situation in the future, how would it be able to meet those needs? And how would it be able to actually pay for election administration if it weren't able to get funding from the state? And after all, the city council already decides on every grant or funding application that would come through anyway, the council gets to vote yes or no. So I just want to end by saying that past these proposals wouldn't approve elections. It would severely hamper them. I'm asking the city council not to take this knee-jerk reaction to scale back our local democracy. Thank you.
Any questions? Clerk Jeffries, did you have the counter on for the previous speaker?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have, it looks like we have one more on Zoom.
We do. Is there no one else left in the gallery?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Luann Crowder, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
My name is Luann Crowder, and I live at 818 South Roosevelt Street.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
I believe that elections matter to a vibrant democracy. Because of that, I have volunteered to help citizens register to vote. Before I retired, I helped citizens register to vote at the library. Post-retirement and pre-pandemic, I did the same at schools, the Boys and Girls Club, a nursing home, libraries, and mid-pandemic, sat outdoors at the Green Bay Voting Mural. My husband Jim Wall and I worked as poll workers for the August and November 2020 elections and worked at Central Count in City Hall for the April 2021 election. We were not needed in the February 2022 election, but completed the requisite training in elections. At Central Count, the high-speed ballot envelope opener purchased through grant funds was a godsend. Because of it, we were able to complete our task more quickly and without damage to ballots we handled. Voting, especially for the first time, is not easy. I remember a woman who started to walk out of the polling place with her ballot because she needed help with translation. Fortunately, someone stopped her before she left with her ballot, which would have invalidated her vote. I have helped people by explaining to them what documents they needed to enable them to register to vote. I helped nursing home residents complete their requests for absentee ballots. At City Hall's early voting for the November 2020 election, I saw the delight that voters took in selecting an "I voted" sticker and reminded them that they could take selfies at the "I voted" mural just outside City Hall. I applauded first-time voters. It was an amazingly affirmative experience for all of us. I personally like election days to be celebratory holidays. We do not need any new restrictive voting measures. Our democracy is built on trust, respect, and a belief in the inherent ethics of our fellow citizens. Please show that you, our elected officials, trust, respect, and believe us. Reject these proposals. Thank you.
Ma'am, any questions? Thank you.
Your Honor, there's one other person in Zoom who has just raised her hand. Thank you, Ms. Melissa Stitz. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Sure. My name is Melissa Stitz. My address is 3487 Bay Highlands Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Yes, so I did complete the form, Clerk Jeffries. And in the form, I did put comments that I just would like the opportunity to speak. So evidently, that didn't come through. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak this evening, though. As I look at the screen, I see a lot of people that are tired. And I see a lot of heads, you know, going sideways, lots of. I know it's been a long, long session, lots of good feedback. But the thing I would say is you all have a very challenging job to do because this evening, you've heard a lot of opinions. You've heard a lot of stories, and not made-up stories. It's individuals' true account for what they believe and what they've experienced. And through those experiences, they contradict each other. And so somehow, you all have to be able to step back and look at the situation at hand. And so initially, I wasn't going to say a lot. But the thing I have to just mention to you all is the fact that we have issues with our elections in Green Bay. And I have family out of state that will contact us, call, text, whatever, and say, what is going on there? Because we've made the news, we've been on Twitter, we've been on Facebook, we've been on news, radio. Green Bay is out there. So there clearly is an issue. And what is it stemming from? What is the root cause of it? That is up to you all to figure out and to solve. That's not anything that any one of us that's calling this evening can fix. We have ideas, we have proposals, we have things that we could be a quick fix. But at the end of the day, you all have to be able to collaborate and figure this out. So that's all I have to say about that. But I hope to see collaboration. I hope to see people set their personal opinions aside and work together to get it resolved. The other piece I want to mention, the other piece I want to mention is, if you've not watched the Protection and Policy Meeting, I did listen to all four hours, the entire four hours. And I will tell you this, I've sat through a lot of meetings like you all. Some could have been an email. You know, maybe a meeting we didn't need a meeting for, right? This meeting was probably the most disturbing meeting I have watched in a long time. In a long time. Disturbing piece was the way that citizens were being treated by our alders. And I know other individuals had mentioned, you know, alders' names, but Alder LeFave, the way the bickering back and forth with Polly Razor. And you can go back and you can re-watch that entire meeting. That was uncalled for. As a citizen, she was trying to bring solutions. Her stance on what took place of the events that Matt experienced. And to watch the back and forth and back and forth, not allowing her to finish her sentence, that's uncalled for. And what I would be requesting is clarity from our city attorney on whether aggressively debating with public speakers during an open forum, is that acceptable? Is it violation of Wisconsin Open Meeting laws? Or is that acceptable? Is that acceptable standards? I don't think in Green Bay, this is the type of standard we want to set when we have citizens that are taking the time to be present and be engaged. I think we can do a lot better than that. That's all I have to say. And, you know, I wish you all the best of luck in moving forward with this. I know there's a lot on the table. But thank you for the work that you do and continue to collaborate together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So that exhausts our list of speakers. Entertain a motion? Motion has been made to close the floor by Alder Scanell. Seconded by Alder Dorff. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I believe we have a motion to separate that's on the table. That was made by Alder Dorff, seconded by Alder Weary. What was it?
I thought it was Alder Scanell, Your Honor. Is that accurate?
We did not yet. No, any discussion on who seconded the motion to separate? This was hours ago. You might not recall.
Mayor, I believe I made that motion.
Yes, that is correct. I have it written as Dorff and Johnson.
Okay. Dorff made the motion.
As a point of information, though, Mayor, I did make that second, and I am in support of dividing these. However, if there are folks who want to make, members of council who want to make general comments as the public did, would that be permissible under this motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so we have a motion and a second to separate. Obviously, if members of council have comments on that, happy to entertain them now. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to everybody who appeared tonight, you know, via Zoom or in person. This is, this is democracy. This is great. It's great to see so many people facing their opinions. It's appreciated. And I wish we had more of it. Regarding to separating these, it's interesting to note, we heard some conjecture tonight about how this is going to change things and, you know, resolutions, things of that nature. Three of the seven items were referring to staff for more information so we can do committee work. We talked about how we didn't want to do committee work here. The committee wanted genuinely more information so we could hash it out and look at the details. That's what's being requested. We're not moving anything forward other than letting the committee do its work. And the other items are self-explanatory. Really, no action was taken other than receiving and placing on file. So I'm fine with separating them if we want votes on them. But none of them, I think, are really very egregious. So thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on that motion to separate? Seeing none.
Mayor?
Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I just, maybe some general comments, since this seems to be the most appropriate place to do it. You know, a lot of really great discussion tonight. And I think some really useful suggestions were made by folks on both sides. And I took a lot of notes on this. And, you know, oftentimes in situations like this, you know, there's the old saying, my truth, your truth, and then there's the truth in between. And I think the reality is, is a lot of mistakes have been made. And I think unfortunately, because of the circumstance, some of them have perhaps been overblown, and some of them could have been addressed a little bit differently and more strategically. But at the end of the day, you know, I think something that I heard loud and clear, and I think this came through from everybody, and that is the fundamental right to vote is something so critically important to our democracy, and I couldn't agree more. And I think that is something we need to work to protect. And interestingly, I think that's what both sides of this conversation are trying to do tonight. And I think unfortunately, both sides of this issue have been politicized in a way that is preventing us sometimes to getting to useful solutions. So I think it's important to point out that tonight, what we have in front of us, and Alder Weary said this, but I want to bring this up because it was mentioned multiple times to oppose the resolution tonight. There is no resolution tonight. There's simply items to refer to staff to say, hey, look at this, maybe draft something, which means we're likely going to have this conversation again, probably. There's been a lot of talk about voter suppression, dog whistles going off, limiting voters, restricting voters. I think personally, I've received some misinformation from folks about what voter navigators actually do. And I think a lot of that just requires some clarity because I think, again, things are being said, but I'm missing the facts and how that's happening. So for example, if somebody has a question, just because we don't have a voter navigator doesn't mean the clerk will not answer it. That's the clerk's job is to answer it. When we talk about things like curbside voting, that's state law. That's required at every polling location. We're not eliminating that. You know, we talk about outside money and what type of impact does it have in elections? Folks, that outside money can still be spent. The only request in front of us right now is that the city not be the conduit that makes the decision about how it's spent, that that money can still come in. So I, you know, I think at the end of the day, you know, I just, I want us to really sort of strip down our partisan leanings on this and really come at this with an open mind, recognizing again, going back to the point I made before, mistakes were made. That's okay to acknowledge that. That's leadership to acknowledge that. It's how we respond to those mistakes. And what are the solutions that we're going to drive home to correct those things? And I think ultimately, that's why we're all here. So I do support referral of most of these items simply because I think it's a healthy process to have that conversation around saying, you know what, a mistake was made around this issue? Here's a possible solution. And everybody's going to have an opportunity to say whether or not they like that solution. So that's all I wanted to say tonight, Mayor. But again, just really wanting to emphasize again that there is no tangible action in front of us this evening. This is referring to staff and saying, let's do a little bit more work on this.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments? Alder Storey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Like some folks said, you know, we had a four-and-a-half-hour Protection and Policy Meeting that we discussed a lot of these items. And I think there are some citizens that feel like, well, we're not being heard. We listened. I thought we listened well. We're referring a lot of these back to staff. You know, it's hard, you know, like for me myself, somebody will say, well, Mark, what are you? When I campaign, are you Republican or Democrat? They always ask me. And I go, I'm neither. I'm a moderate. I try to work with everybody. That's always the challenge. And no matter what happens, I probably have both sides angry at me because of that. But with that being said, I really feel that, like Alder Johnson said, there were mistakes that were made over these last three elections. Minor, some, some others, maybe not so much. But the bottom line is that accountability to say, look, we made a mistake. Own it, and then let's move forward. Has that always happened? I don't know if it always has happened that way. But it's a challenge. You know, like I said, we heard a lot of comments. I heard, you know, people that were against or were for this resolution, so to speak. Yes, were nine, there were 13 that said no. Some great comments on both sides. And I really appeal, like Ms. Stitz said, let's work together. You know, there's a lot of finger pointing going on right now, and it's very tiring. Like I told people before, I said, when I got elected, I got elected to be a public servant. A lot of this other stuff is just extraneous. It makes it difficult to do the job that we do. And I think, you know, some citizens realize, say, well, you know, what are you people doing? You know, what are you doing? You know, a lot of us go to 15 to 25 meetings a month or more. We don't get paid a lot for this. It's public service, and this is what we want to do. And I would really appeal to both sides, let's try to work this out. You know, I mean, all this finger pointing, all this haranguing, tiring, very tiring. So own up to it. A lot of this is going back to committee. We will try our darndest to do the right thing. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion to separate? Alder Burnett?
No comments on the motion to separate, but I have comments about the general election stuff. Do you want to make those now, or?
Yeah, go for it.
So, respect all my colleagues on the City Council. But my opinion is that time after time, what we hear from the public is we want accountability. And the City Council is very hesitant to demand any level of accountability. And that is what's leading so much frustration out in the community. The latest situation on February was actually quite a big blunder. That was not anything that we can overlook as if it was some insignificant thing. It's the third instance in the last 23 months where the city government has. It's the third instance in the last 23 months where the city government has created some suspicion around election, election activity and how we conduct elections. And the, the, the public is demanding some level of accountability, which seems to not come from this City Council or the city government. Just real quick, I was just going briefly, writing down some of the situations that happened since April 2020. We were ill-prepared for that election because of a decision that the city government made, the administration made to sue the state of Wisconsin in federal court. That lawsuit was thrown out in rather short order. And then that did not allow us to develop proper plans to administer the April 2020 election. Whether we want to admit that or not, there were hundreds, if not several thousands, of Green Bay residents who were disenfranchised by their own city government, city government that belongs to them. All of us at this table were elected in that election 2020. And many of the people that are out watching this meeting did not get an opportunity to vote for or against any of us, and that is a big issue. That is a big lack of, big lack of capabilities. And so Alder Me Weary and myself, we were really appalled by that, obviously. And we presented a few ideas for, oh my gosh, the city disenfranchised hundreds, if not thousands of people, let's have an outside look into what happened. We contacted the Wisconsin Elections Commission. We were told by their staff counsel and their director that that's not something that the WEC does. So we brought that before the council. I think it was voted down. Then we came up with the idea of having an outside look, you know, maybe an auditor, maybe someone with a business background, maybe someone from a different municipality to review, like the pivot points, what happened, what decisions were made, why were you so ill-prepared? Why did you turn down National Guard help? All of that, an outside look. And we were voted down by this council yet again. And that led to the next issue. We created the ad hoc committee. There are a lot of decisions that that ad hoc committee made, which were good decisions, that were very clearly visible to the public and visible to this council. That was open government. That's a good thing. However, when we started accepting the grant and the, the strings that Justice Gableman and all the other investigators are talking about, there were decisions made by the city government that members of the council were not aware of. And I'm telling you, I would have created a lot of, you know me, I would have raised my hand, this does not make sense. Why do we have Spitzer Rubenstein touching our election? Why do we have all these other advisors? Why do we have all of these other advisors touching our election? Why are we not being told all of this? And so sure enough, September 2020, when we approved the second batch, I thought it was rather suspicious that we were going to take $150,000 of the Center for Tech and Civic like dollars to hire basically a public relations firm, $150,000. And what I said at that time was, I love that we're encouraging people to vote. That's what political parties are for, that's what civic groups are for, that's what celebrities are for, that's what candidates are for. But when the city of Green Bay takes $150,000 and targets certain voters, I think that that is discriminatory to all other voters. How can you possibly be fair to all voters? You can't be. And so that's why city government should not electioneering. We certainly should not use public or private grant dollars to do that sort of activity. I had a lot of suspicions about that. And then, after the November election, contacted by a lot of people in the community, a lot of concerns when the Spitzer Rubenstein and all the other things happen, people were concerned. And then our clerk and our deputy clerk decided to leave the city. Why did they leave? Were we told? I mean, was the city council told the reasons why the clerk and the deputy clerk left the city? Okay? So then things were starting to not make sense to me. So I raised my hand, and I said, maybe we need to have an outside attorney-client privileged opinion to address the council with my concerns. However, a lot of these discussions were behind closed doors and were hidden behind attorney-client privileged opinion. So you all know, I went to great length, very professionally, with integrity, to bring these things forward, but I had to do it in a way with coded language, because as a member of this city government, I still have a duty and obligation to protect the city. And I certainly don't want to slander or be libelous towards any city employee or the administration. It was like laboring, trying to explain my point, that I thought that an outside attorney-client privileged opinion was necessary, and shot down by the council several times. In fact, the city council wouldn't even allow me to figure out how much it would cost to get another attorney's opinion. This city council has repeatedly made public transparency much worse. Almost done. So the attorney-client privilege was done. And then I thought, when all the open records came out in March, by the way, I pushed to have that open record stuff sent out quicker than what was being done, and thankfully it happened. And in March, we put the open records out there, and then the media picked up on certain things. And then, lo and behold, things were a lot worse than what we thought they were. There were a lot of emails that our former clerk had communicated with. And there were a lot of things that were really concerning to me anyways. So then I said, you know, it's rather strange, the city attorney and the HR director directly report to the mayor. They're accountable to all of us, but they report to the position of the mayor. Now, the claim that the former clerk made included accusations against the person in the mayor's office. I thought that it was strange that a city employee, two city employees that report directly to that person should not be conducting the investigation. That's common sense, that no good practice would you have a subordinate investigative claim against their superior. Just fantasy land, that doesn't happen, except for in government, perhaps. So then I thought, why don't we have an outside HR department or outside attorney review the claim? Because former clerk Teskey had revealed a lot of things that were really surprising to all of us. I thought, an outside investigation. Six-six was the vote. Mayor chose not to break the tie. So now we are at this situation, and of course, the Gableman thing happened. And then our defense is, let's get the help of Law Forward and two other law firms. On their website, on their social media feed, they have very unfavorable things to say about conservatives. In fact, Law Forward was created to be a thorn in the side of conservatives. Liberal, conservative, socialist, communist, libertarian, independent, I don't care. This government belongs to everybody, all the people. And what we see is a lack of accountability over and over again, to the point that Law Forward is defending us, and we're not responding to subpoenas. Law Forward on their Facebook page refers to Michael Gableman's subpoenas as sham penis. They're sham. That's, that's really insulting. And what's even more insulting, on two votes of seven to five, we agreed to take the help from Law Forward. On the second seven-to-five vote, I wanted to know who was funding them. When we take law firm help, we are entitled to know who is funding them, because we have outside groups funding our elections now. Apparently, we have outside special interest groups now funding our law department. Enough is enough, guys. We need accountability. Every time I have used this position, City Council President, to have an outside look at what is going on in Green Bay, consistently voted down and listened to the people. Listen, not to the people that maybe support you, but listen to all of the, I've listened to all the speakers, speakers who maybe I wouldn't agree with on a lot of things, that actually make a lot of really good points, as do these people. And these people, there are a lot more of these people that want accountability from their city government. In the February election, it appears to me that the state, city government ignored or thought they could excuse their way out of a statutory requirement. We said that there were observers the entire time. That was a lie. That's not true, because from seven until 8:30, there is not an observer. There are election inspectors there, but that's different than observers. So any member of the public that wanted to keep an eye on their city government, count the votes, were misled. And we continued. And Ms. Juneau had a very good point. We needed to own that mistake, and we needed to stop it. That meant that we were counting ballots until two in the morning. So be it, as long as the public was watching, which is their right. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with everything President Burnett said, is well stated. You have a great memory from not reading from any kind of notes. That's amazing. I have to write everything down. But my question is, there's two items ahead of us on the agenda. One is the number four consideration with possible action on, on the different efforts on the election. And the next one is regarding the, the election that happened on February 15th. And it sounds like we're kind of blending both together. Would now be the time to comment on that?
We should stick to item four.
All right. I just wanted, because I do have plenty of comments regarding the next item. So I want to make sure that I'll be able to speak to that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Then let's, let's go through these things.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. All right, so the motion before us is on separation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. And those items are separated, so we're on four-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Dorff?
Item one isn't even anything that we are going to be voting on, I believe. I'm not sure, it needs a separation. The staff did affirm that the city of Green Bay's tabulators have no modems or internet connectivity. So I would move that we receive and place on file, item one.
Okay, Alder Dorff makes a motion to receive and place on file. Item four-one, is there a second? Seconded by Alda Gerlock. Alder Weary, and then Alder Burnett? Alder Stor?
I thought we approved the first three. We didn't.
No, we just separated everything.
All right, never mind.
Yep. Alder Weary, and then Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually make a motion to refer this to staff to affirm in writing that the city of Green Bay's voting tabulators have no modems or internet connectivity. I think, just think that would be wise on our part. Thanks.
Okay, Alder Weary makes a motion to refer to staff to confirm in writing that our voting machines or voting tabulators are not connected to the internet or to modems?
Or have any internet connectivity, yes. Yeah, I just think.
Okay.
It puts it in writing what was discussed. I think that's open and honest.
Did it write? Alder Stevens?
Yeah, I thought that.
Okay, so there's a motion to refer made by Alder Weary, seconded now by Alder Dorff. Further discussion? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with that. Something in writing, now Clerk Jeffries did mention that, and I think there was a little bit of give and take with a few members of the public who were under the impression that there were, you know, some sort of internet connectivity, and Clerk Jeffries said not. So something with a little more definitive explanation that that's an occasion, or that it would not be a possibility. So again, I just briefly saw the report from the Office of Special Counsel. And there again, it said, it kind of talked about Spitzer Rubenstein and some of the email passwords that he was given for networks and this or that. And so that's something that's going to create a lot of concern for members of the public. You know, the, the city says there's no capability, then why did Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein's need separate networks that were hidden from public view? So something in writing to that effect would be good. Thank you.
Okay. Alder Dorff?
I want to make sure that it's, we are saying, what we are voting on is to refer to staff, that staff affirm in writing that the city of Green Bay's tabulators have no modems or internet connectivity. Is that correct, Alder Weary? Okay.
Okay. Alda Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before we make staff go and do this and then come back, because they haven't written it in a way that satisfies everyone with all the different opinions out there, could Alder Burnett give us some more clarification on exactly what he's looking for? Because I can just see this happening. It'll come back out. People will say, oh, but they didn't talk about this, they didn't talk about the secret passwords, they didn't talk about this secret thing and that secret thing. And so let's, so we can put this thing to rest once and for all. What, if you could be just a little bit more detailed on what you're looking for? Thank you.
Again, I'm not an expert on elections, so obviously, the concern for some members of the public is if you have an apparatus that is connected to the internet, if you believe in possibility, whether it be a conspiracy or factual, that votes are being switched and, you know, numbers are being manipulated. If, if you have a dumb machine that's not connected in any way whatsoever to Wi-Fi, hardline internet, ethernet, then it would be very hard to manipulate that. You basically have paper ballots, that is your backup. It's not like an electronic version that can be manipulated. Now, every state does things a little different. I don't know what state and federal law is. But after watching that meeting and, and kind of following some of the concerns in other states, to say with definition that city of Green Bay ballot counting machines will always be disabled, will never have any internet connectivity. In fact, we will go out of our way to purchase machines that only count paper ballots and cannot be connected to the internet. Because again, Alda Galvin, when you see this, and again, the Gableman report came out today, when you see this and you see that Spitzer Rubenstein did in fact have Wi-Fi passwords, the question is, why? I mean, what, what, what was he in need of that for? And so that's my answer.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have. Yeah, sure. Alder Scannell?
So point of clarification, we're going to include the secret passwords and everything in these statements? Or? That seems to be what he's asking.
No, I think we have the motion.
All right, okay.
Any other discussion? Alder Stor?
Point of clarification, Alder Burnett, if I could ask. You're, you're talking about, is there a timeframe you're looking at here? Just this past election or all three elections? As far as?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter? Okay, I'm just asking.
I'm on God's time. So whatever the city government needs to do to make things right and transparent to all members of the public, I'm on board with. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been referred to staff. Item four-two. Alder Dorff?
So there, there's some words need to be added to this, because you don't ever cure absentee ballots, you cure absentee ballot certificates, which is the envelope. So I think it should read, refer to staff to create a policy for curing absentee ballot certificates in response to request, including what can be cured and by whom. And I think, I wish, and that a logbook of the number of ballot certificates cured be kept, and a list of those whose ballot certificates were cured be kept. We need to add that.
Okay, so that was an amendment, essentially. Is there a second? Second about Alder Stevens. Yeah, Alda Galvin?
There's something of a concern with this, in that if we are documenting whose ballots are cured, are we potentially documenting the ballots? So people could find out how they voted at some later date?
Yeah, I think we could go to Clerk Jeffries for any thoughts on, on the motion as was read by Alder Dorff?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Alda Galvin and Alder Dorff. We would not, this is why Alder Dorff, Alda Galvin had made great pains to distinguish the language and the terminology. Ballot certificates are the envelopes, not the ballots themselves. And so the log of the absentee ballot certificates that we would cure would actually be the name of the person, Jane Smith, who lives at 123 Main Street, who we cured her ballot of X. So that is what the log would entail, would not be anything about what's inside that ballot certificate, but just rather the what we cured and on whose ballot certificate we cured.
All right, thank you. And is it true that when you do cure one of these certificates, you use, there's a way of documenting it, different ink color or something like that?
Yes, that was not the practice in 2020, but it's been the practice since I've been a clerk.
All right, thank you.
Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came about, and the reason I put it on there is when I was notified of something going on on that primary, I came down for an hour or so, and, and looked around and talked with some of the clerk's staff. And I asked, oh, how many ballots have we cured? I thought it was something I kept track of, like, have there been a lot of ballots? Because they're showing me the process. Because they're showing me the process and found out that we don't keep track of it. And so that just started the wheels turning of, you know, okay, well then, we really should be keeping track of it. Can we? Can we keep track of each individual one? Who can cure? Why do they cure? When? How? And that's what the committee was starting to get into and the staff's going to put together. I think that's a process that really needs to be understood and looked at. And so I'm glad we're moving ahead with that. But it's really, it was just out of curiosity. And the staff person I spoke with thought it would be useful also. So I'm glad we're moving ahead with that. Thanks.
Okay. Great. So Clerk, you have the motion as was read by Alder Dorf?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and that was seconded by Alder Stevens? All in favor signify. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In this motion, I support very clear on who can cure the envelopes as Clerk Jeffries explained, because, you know, I would expect that those folks be trained on Wisconsin election law. Hate to be that guy again. But in the Office of Special Counsel report, Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein offered to take, quote, "curing ballots off of the city of Green Bay's plate." Never again should we allow anyone to feel comfortable enough with our process to even offer curing ballots for city of Green Bay elections, especially if they're outside of Green Bay resident, outside of the state of Wisconsin.
Do you have a question from Alder for that, or am I trying to have a question?
Or don't have the proper training in Wisconsin election law. Thank you.
That didn't happen. Clerk Jeffries?
Wait, wait, Mayor. He offered to cure ballots.
That practice did not happen. Clerk Jeffries?
I'm not, excuse me, Your Honor. I'm not sure I understood the question from Alder Burnett. So if you would state that more plainly, I would appreciate it.
Certainly. And on number two, Mr. Weary's comments, part of the motion or idea that he had was to refer to staff to create a policy for curing absentee ballot certificates in response to requests, including what can be cured and by whom. It's very specifically by whom. You know, I think that as we create a policy, only people.
You're just reinforcing the.
By whom, make sure that they're trained with Wisconsin election law, city employees, very specific.
So, thank you. So the clerk's staff, we have five people, including myself here. We have some people who are on point for elections and other people who do other duties for, during election time. All the clerk's staff who handle ballots are trained on our state database, WISVOTE, as well as are deputized by me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. On to four three. This is receiving place on file, a request to discontinue use of any drop boxes. Motion to receive and place on file. Alder Dorf makes that motion to receive and place on file. It was seconded by Alder Galvin. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was on my list of things initially back when the courts are bouncing it around, back and forth, back and forth, and I wanted us to kind of weigh in on it. But I think right now we're waiting really on the Wisconsin Supreme Court to rule on it. So I think it might be pointless for us to decide what we don't want to do until they rule. They might rule none of them are allowable, and then that's what we do. If they allow some, then we can have that discussion later. So receiving place on file is good. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Motion and a second was made. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been received and placed on file. Four five, receiving place on file, a request for no more voter navigators. This is a sole job of the clerk's office. Oops, my apologies. Four four is to refer to staff to investigate, research, and report a request excluding outside money and advisors for elections.
I just don't understand it.
Alder Dorf ask question of the author?
I just, I don't understand what that means. But you can call on Alder Gerlach.
Alder Gerlach, go ahead.
I was going to say the same thing. It's a sentence that doesn't make any sense. I don't know what it means to research and report a request excluding. How do you report a request? I don't understand it. So I think we need to restate it. That's all.
Yeah, I don't know who sort of crafted this motion in committee. Anyone? Stewart?
I don't think we did. You're saying from our committee? I mean, these came before our committee and we just went one by one.
Okay, so this is Alder Weary then?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the effort here, of course, would be to preclude private dollars from being accepted, because as we've found out, sometimes they have some interesting requirements of them. And we shouldn't be involved in that at all. There was a lot of talk from speakers. I think they got some talking points from some emails that went out, because I don't know what they were referring to. We certainly want everybody to vote, and we'll do our generic get out the vote that we've always done. However, when we're required to reach out to certain groups, but with private dollars, that's what we don't want. And so I believe the committee just wanted more information on, from staff about what we could create ordinance-wise to prevent private dollars or advisors from helping with elections. And that was going to come back. So it's really kind of a working, working issue, but it really should say to refer to staff to investigate, research, and report on an ordinance to exclude outside money and advisors for elections, something like that.
Okay, you can make that.
Yeah, I would make that amendment, yeah. Sorry if I misworded it a little bit. And that'll be hashed out of committee, what we want to do, what we can do.
Alder Stevens, discussion on that?
Yeah, I do.
Alder Burnett?
Again, I've been pent up energy. Regarding this, makes sense. I regret my vote on accepting the private dollars. I think that to their two critically important functions municipal governments do, of many, but the two most important to me are public safety and elections. Though proper free and fair elections, all those other things can't be accomplished with proper representation. I do not feel comfortable taking private dollars because of additional strings attached. And I know the legislature and the state senate have kind of debated this back and forth. And I know the governor probably does not agree with the legislative bodies. The way I see this, and I don't like the what about-isms and all this and that, but one side right now is championing, yes, why wouldn't we take private dollars? But what I would say is that aside from anyone who currently holds positions now, let's just say we had a very openly Republican or conservative governor, mayor hypothetically in the future. And let's just say former President Trump is spurned and disgusted, and he says, "Green Bay government, I'd like to fund, you know, some of your election administration." The same people that are just loving the idea of allowing private dollars to run our elections would be appalled at that time. And so what's good for one side has to be consistently good for all sides.
I have a personal privilege, Your Honor. He's making assumptions of me that are completely erroneous.
I didn't mention.
Assumptions of a group of which.
Yeah, I mean, I think his comments were pretty vague, but.
Purposely vague. I don't know who would object to that, Alder Scannell. But my point is, is that we have to understand the apparent and obvious, at least to me, conflicts of interest when you allow private people, private corporations, private grant makers, and all the things that go along with it. I think it would be good practice. We have to fund our elections as a municipal government. Perhaps the state of Wisconsin can help us in moments of crisis, and maybe they did it. And that's a fair criticism of them. But we did not need to take 1.6 million. We spent 8% of it on PPE. Some of the speakers had mentioned that they were concerned about the lack of PPE at central count. So of the 1.6 million, I think we ended up returning like 400,000 or 500,000. So I think it would be a good policy to have for all governments going into the future. We can't have privatized elections, and we can't have privatized law firms and this or that. So, thank you.
A lot of people. Alder Dorf, then Alder LaFave, then Alder Vanderlist.
Thank you. I'm definitely going to be voting against this, because I don't think it is our place to tie the hands of future city councils. There may be something like a pandemic that would happen again. We need to trust that the people who are elected in the future can make a proper decision when money is being offered. And if our city needs the grant money to run an election or to do anything else, it's not our place to tie the hands of future city councils. I'm sure we all can agree on that. Thank you.
And just a kind of a general point, so the audience is aware of this as well. But anytime that the city has awarded grant dollars, they need to be accepted by our common council. In this instance, you know, as has been noted a number of times, it was unanimous. But just generally speaking, the council has to accept it. It's not something the mayor can unilaterally do. Alder LaFave?
I agree with Alder Dorf, but also I want to say something. I don't care what political leaning or ever of anybody that wants to help the city to run an election. I don't care if they're Republican. I don't care if they're Democrat. I don't care, independent. We needed help. There was a pandemic. We needed help. We didn't have the money. We had to hire more people to try to run these elections. I mean, to man these polling places. We needed the drop boxes, because more people were voting, especially in the fall. We needed those things. If somebody, I don't care, if some wacko wanted to give us money to help us have more polling places, more workers, more PPE, drop boxes, whatever it is. This is what we needed for the election. I don't care where you came from. This was needed money that the city needed. You know, Alder Burnett, you know we're in a tight spot with our budgets. Our budgets are terrible. You know, we don't have the money. This was exceptional. It's not a normal period that we've been going through. We're getting out of this pandemic, and so hopefully we can get back to a more normal elections where we don't need all this extra stuff. But no, I believe, you know, we do need help at times, and we accepted it. It was unanimous. We accepted it. And yes, if there were some problems, we have to look at it. We have to find out for sure that everything was fine, and I believe it was. I know there were some little glicks going on, but we have to, we have to run these elections. It's important. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Vanderlist?
Mayor, my comment would be that outside money coming from private sources, it's kind of funny that, you know, they just step forward for the election. You know, we have a lot of other issues in the city of Green Bay. We could use outside money for the fix the bridge, the parks, you name it.
I'll take it.
But outside money for our elections should be handled through the city of Green Bay with the finances that are here. It's the same thing with outside representation when you hire attorneys from Washington DC to represent our city officials in any shape or form. We have attorneys right on staff here that are very capable, that should be able to handle our situations right here. They're giving us, they're giving us information right here in our city council tonight. They're commenting on different things. They should be the ones handling our affairs. We don't need Washington DC to come in and help us with anything as far as elections or legal representation. We have our own city here. I don't see Mr. Rubenstein or any of these other folks coming to Green Bay to keep an eye on our city as far as, they came for the elections. That was it. Myself personally, I feel that we don't need any outside money. We have money enough here in the city of Green Bay. We've taken over $100 million for a lot of things that we spend on. We should be spending the money on our elections. If we need help with poll workers, and they've had them in the past. Our past clerks have used people. And as far as, you know, just the money coming for the elections, that's where we took a blunder. You know, a major blunder. And if their outside sources came in and the public overall, it wasn't received that well once things got rolling. And then we had a, you know, a major catastrophe at our, at our April election and as it went forward in the fall. You know, a lot of people stood in line for hours and this type of stuff. It wasn't acceptable, let's face it. And the outside money that came in, we'd have been better off to pass on it, because it created a lot of distrust and, you know, miscommunication and all the rest of it. It was a blunder. I, when Mr. Weary was calling in on our committee meeting, I said I'd second the motion not to take any outside money from outside, private outside sources. It just, we don't need that money, period. And we don't need any help from Washington DC to come in and help us with our legal counsel either. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Galvin?
I would ask Alder Burnett then, granted, we only spent 8% of that money on PPE, but how much did we spend on renting facilities? Because the schools and the churches won't allow us in. How much money did we spend on hiring poll workers to entice them to come and do the polls so we didn't end up with an April election? A lot of that money was not used for alleged targeted public relations work or to hire individuals to help us work our way through this election. And like has been said before here, I hate to see us close the door permanently on the ability to take grant money and use it to the benefit of everyone. And I would say that a majority of that money was used in that way. I could accept working out an ordinance that puts more restraints in how the money's used. But, you know, once the budget's done the year before. And I'd challenge you right now to tell me where we would have gotten the money to do it. And if we hadn't gotten the money to do it, then how would we have rented the facilities and hired the people to actually run the election? And I mean, it's great to say, well, it would have been nice if the state kicked in. We all know the state's not going to kick in. It'll be a long, long, long time before the state ever kicks in when something like this ever happens again. They haven't done it in the past. They're not going to do it in the future. The county's not going to do it, certainly. We haven't seen them offer us any help. And so it's great to talk, let's just put the roadblocks in place, but what do you do in the future? And I'm not talking, who knows what's going to happen in the future? No one certainly anticipated what happened the last two years to happen. And so to put something in there permanently that blocks that just ties the hands of the future councils. And I can't support this the way it's going. I could support some restrictions or some checks and balances in there to prevent that from happening, but not to just carte blanche say, no, never again. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I support the referral, and I think Alder Galvin's right, that there are some other positions, I guess, that we can put on this, right? We could say a super majority of council must accept it, or two-thirds must accept it. But the reality is, is we can't even have that conversation if we don't refer. So I support referrals so that we can allow that conversation to happen. You know, and I won't deny that a lot of good was done with the grant money that was received. And Alder Galvin, you talked about a number of things that are clearly nonpartisan in nature. But with all of the trouble that we have received from the small percentage that was problematic, was it worth it? I mean, we could have done a budget amendment. It's our responsibility to manage elections, and we can do that budget amendment, and we can fix those financing gaps. You know, it's been brought up that it was unanimous to accept the grant funding. That was true. And yet, sometimes we forget is grants have requirements. And sometimes they're, you know, they're very obvious, and other times they're a little bit more subdued, and you don't find out until later what's happening. And, you know, so again, even though it was unanimous, some of the uses of it, right? We took separate follow-up votes for different uses, and those votes were not all unanimous. I think sometimes we forget that. And even I asked the question at the time, well, what assurances do we have that this will be strictly deployed in a nonpartisan way? And clearly, I think we've seen some of the challenges that have, you know, that have evolved as a result of this. And, you know, if the Koch brothers were offering us a grant to run an election, I can assure you'd have as much outcry from the other side of the aisle here. And I think at the end of the day, I'd rather just turn it all away. But I'm also recognized that we still have, right now, we do have the vote to vote on every single grant that comes before us. So, you know, maybe it's not a carte blanche policy, but maybe it is something with some additional oversight and provisions. But I feel like we need to have that conversation. So I support referral, because I don't know why we would, why we would not want to fix something that has fueled so much mistrust in our community. I think we have to take this head on, and I support doing that.
Thanks, Alder. Any? Alder Dorf?
Motion to amend the statement. Would that be a possibility?
Make a motion to amend, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, and instead of what is placed before us, to say to refer to staff to research parameters for accepting outside money for elections.
Is there a second? Seconded by Alder. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder LaFave. Discussion on Alder Dorf's amendment? Alder Galvin?
And Alder Dorf, to that end, are you, are you looking at creating an ordinance that would have the parameters in it, or just to investigate parameters on accepting that money?
I think you're starting to conversation with the research, and, and when you get the report out from the research, at that point, you decide if you'd like to create an ordinance. So I'm not jumping right to an ordinance. Maybe it's a policy. Maybe it's a procedure. Maybe it's, you know, work rules. So I'm not saying right away jump to an ordinance, but I'm saying let's have the conversation as Alder Johnson said, and then decide if we would like an ordinance in place.
And I guess my concern is, I, I understand what you're saying. Twenty years goes by, and then something happens, and unless it's like a ordinance, people are going to forget about it. You know, much like the police department forgot that they had an agreement with Brown County to fix a bear cat by covering half the cost. Okay? If we hadn't gone looking into that, we might have footed that whole bill. And so that's my concern when it's a guideline, you know, a suggestion, a rule that disappears in the books over a period of time.
Well, I'm not saying we couldn't create an ordinance. I'm just saying, let's start by researching it. And, but gee, I would accept a friendly amendment if you like.
I, I, I would do. I would make that amendment that we're working towards a, a ordinance.
So to refer to staff to research parameters for accepting outside money for elections and to create an ordinance?
Attorney Bunker.
Just to provide a little context, so I, I would recommend that this, at this point, just be sent to staff just to research, simply because our basic understanding is that federal law and state statutes govern generally how elections are funded. So we can't put in ordinance anything that's contrary to what's already there. So we want to be able to have an opportunity to robustly look at what is available, what we can do, what we can't do. I just don't want there to be any expectations that an ordinance will be forthcoming because staff still needs to research and find out whether that can happen. So that is what we would want to report back out to council as to what options are available. So you can refer for an ordinance to be forthcoming. I just want it to be understood that that may not happen, so I don't want anybody to have any incorrect presumption.
I could add the word possibly, and to possibly create an ordinance.
Sure.
Could you restate that one?
I could restate it. To refer to staff to research parameters for accepting outside money for elections and to?
And for the possible?
And for, and to?
And for the possible?
And for the possibility of an ordinance to be created. Okay.
I was going to say possible creation, but okay.
Okay.
English teacher agrees, but.
With possible?
Yep. We're going to go to?
Possibly create an ordinance.
Alder Vanderleest, and then Alder LaFave.
Thank you.
Find any kind of election integrity, we should just vote accepting the outside money from private sources. That we won't accept money from outside sources, private outside sources. Both sides of the aisle are affected by outside money. And, and I feel that if we take our election seriously, we won't accept any outside money, private money. And we'll handle our own elections right here in the city of Green Bay, in-house, with our own money. There's money for things. That's why you have contingency funds. If you got to pull some money from another department, whatever it might be, that you got to work through to get the money. If you're a business person, you'll figure out how to do it, and it won't affect very much of the, wherever it's coming from. If it's 2% or 3% from one department to help out a little bit another department, that's perfectly the way you should do business. And, and I feel that we should eliminate the private money from the elections. We'll take private money from other sources. They're going to help us, uh, just for example, Mr. Resh donated like five million dollars to the University of Green Bay to build the, the center out there for engineering school. State of Wisconsin gave five million dollars towards it. Brown County gave over five million dol, five million towards it. We got the engineering school now in effect. And that's private money that came from Dick Resh for that school, and it's, and it helps the public tremendously. But when we talk about our elections, our elections should be run without private money, because there's no integrity left as far as how the election was run, the last election was run, because we brought in private money. The private money was the, was the source that the public lost its trust. So my, my thoughts are, let's eliminate the private money. You know, all these, you know, look it over again, you know, hash it over some more, and, you know, different requirements that we'll take it. Don't take private money to run our elections. If we want to be forthcoming, stay away from the private money for elections. Handle our own, this is our city of Green Bay. Handle our elections in-house. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder LaFave?
I was going to say that because Alder Galvin saying, you know, in 20 years, you kind of forgot about, we should put down a time that staff would refer it back to the council to discuss if we can have an ordinance. We should have a timeline so that it comes forward. It's not left just, you know, into affinity. So that's, I would like some kind of timeline that we can do this, so that we're sure that if we can do an ordinance, that we will do it.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, all, all the Alders are making these comments and ideas and that. We're kind of doing committee work right now. It's to refer back to staff, and it's also, it'll come back to committee. So we'll talk about all of this, and we'll make the wisest and best decisions we can make with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Otherwise, we have a motion, motion, yeah, a motion to amend. Yes, please. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Okay. To refer to staff to research parameters for accepting outside, I'm going to say slash grant money. Does that make sense to add that? Outside slash grant money for elections and to possibly create an ordinance?
Yep. So that was offered by Alder Dorf. Who was the second on that? Seconded by Alder Scanell. Request has been made to use the board, so we will do that.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
What happened? You have to scroll it. Just, just what I just said.
Alders Johnson, Vanderleest, Stoyer, Burnett, and Garlock, please vote.
Mine's not coming up. I vote yes.
Thank you. Alder Vanderleest?
Nay.
Stoyer? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Here's your dispraved vote.
And that is adopted 11 to 1. Entertain a motion to adopt as amended. Seconded by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. Where are we now? On to the fifth item, receiving place on file request for no more voter navigators. This is the sole job of the clerk's office.
Mayor?
Alder Dorf?
Yes. So having attended the meeting, I understood that the clerk can certainly hire, with the approval of council, people to help with elections. The word navigator came from the Hurricane Katrina. The navigators during Hurricane Katrina were there to help people navigate the whole system of getting money, building, rebuilding their homes, getting money to live and to eat. So during the ad hoc elections committee, being on the ad hoc elections committees, we just, the word navigators was a word we chose. So it, it doesn't matter if it's a voter navigator. The clerk still will get help, and the clerk did agree during that meeting that, as did the people at the meeting, agreed that there certainly could be people hired, approved by council, to help in the clerk's office. So to all the people that were concerned that were getting rid of any help, that's not what the purpose is. There were three voter navigators. There were three. That's it. And then one of them had got a different job, so in the end, there were two. So there's a lot of confusion about people helping you out. They weren't the voter navigators that were hired. They weren't placed at every polling location. There were helpers. There were support people, but there were only two voter navigators, and we as a council already eliminated them from, from the budget, if you remember, a few months ago. We took them off the, the chart or the table organization, so we don't even have them. So I am going to say, receive in place on file the request for no more voter navigators. This is the sole job of the clerk's office.
Alder Dorf makes that motion to receive in place on file. That was seconded by Alder LaFave. Alder Burnett?
Thank you. A question for Clerk Jeffries. Now, you were not the clerk at the moment of the November election, but you were obviously very involved. Can you just explain the voter navigator, where that came? Was that part of the grant that we approved?
I'm sorry, you cut out. I did not hear the full, part of your question. Can you repeat that?
So the voter navigator position, was that included in the, the grant that we received as, as a position that we'd fund by way of the grant?
So yes, as part of the grant, the voter navigators were included, as well as giving additional funds to poll workers.
Did you or the clerk's office create the job description for the voter navigators?
My recollection was that it was a joint effort.
Joint effort with whom?
Myself and the clerk's, the Ben clerk's office.
What, any collaboration with Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein?
No, absolutely not.
I don't, I don't really, I mean, this is going to sound like I'm setting a trap, Clerk Jeffries, but on the Gableman report, it said specifically that Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein provided voter navigator job description. Do you remember that?
That is unfortunate, that it made it way down to Madison. That is not my recollection, my recollection, nor was Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein involved when we created that, that, oh, grant application back in mid-June to late-June.
Do you, do you remember seeing a job description for a voter navigator as shared by Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein?
Absolutely not.
Well, we have to inform Mr. Gableman because that is added in here. Thank you. I'm, 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 I think that the voter navigators kind of are very, very delicate because we always talk about being equitable and fair, and that's a value I think we all aspire to, being fair. But when you have voter navigators, you have to be very careful because the appearance could be that it's intended to help a certain demographic group, which again, not bad. I think everyone should vote, but the accusations or insinuations is that through these positions, you're basically encouraging or allowing voter turnout for one group of people, whereas other groups of people who may not have voter navigators, you know, reaching out to them could make a case that the city is not targeting them through their efforts of the voter navigator. So Alder Dorf is correct. We did remove that from the city budget. It was there, not, not funded, but the, the title was there. And I think I made a motion to remove that, and that the council agreed to it. But it wasn't a unanimous vote. So I do think that we need to just remove voter navigators permanently. Not that we don't think voter outreach is important, but it's not appropriate. It creates really delicate balances for city employees on the verge of being accused of electioneering in their official positions. Thank you.
So there. Additional comments on the motion received in place on file? Alder Weary and Alder LaFave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I, right now, I'm in favor of receiving place on this on file because we did at budget time remove them from our table of organizations, and it wasn't unanimous. Of course, some people were against that. Heard a lot of things tonight that obviously people were confused. There's always help from the clerk's office about voting, and at election time, if they need help, we always approve it. There's always going to be someone there to take a call, take an email, to come in and ask questions. That's what we're here for, to answer questions. It's just this type of role that we had two or three people for, from this grant money. That is what I had an issue with, and it's no longer there. So, thank you.
So there. Alder LaFave?
I just want to mention, the reason you kind of need a navigator is because we've had so many changes going on. We had the pandemic, and we had to, we had to go to, what was it, two places to vote in that April election? I mean, just, it, there wasn't even enough time to try to find these places. So much happened in that time period. And, you know, when you've got big ships who come into our port here, they have a navigator. They navigate how to come in, because we have tides. People don't realize we have different tides, different things happen in the, in our channel coming in. That's what they're for, because we had so many changes from the state. When I started voting, I didn't even know that you could get an absentee ballot. I just voted, went to the polls, because everything was fine then. But now more people are allowed, they changed that, more people are allowed to have a absentee ballot. They opened up voting here at early voting. That has been, and there's been hours changed, not the state changed some of that. I mean, there's so many things that have changed, so people don't, they don't always get the news, how things are going with an election. So they need people to help them. This is, and this is an important thing. We run elections, so we have an obligation to help people to know how to vote. I mean, not who you're going to vote for, but how to get in there. How, how does this process work? We can't let people clueless. And people probably aren't voting because we have so many changes. I had people in my district go, well, how come my polling place, it keeps changing? Well, because we can't find the places anymore that they used to vote at. I had four wards. We're down to three. So I mean, we've had so many changes going on. That's why we, people need help. Thank you.
So there. Alder Burnett, for a second time?
Yeah, thank you. And I want to clarify something. I think I may have spoken in error, because there are multiple pages in the Gableman report, and it doesn't specifically say that Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein provided the voter navigator position, but I want to correct the record because it's important when I get something wrong. And Clerk Jeffries, I apologize if I said Spitzer Rubenstein. In the paragraph in the Gableman report, it said the Zucker, Zuckerberg Five used at a minimum the following group of CTCL allied corporations to engage in election administration. Center for Civic Design, Vote at Home Institute, Voter Participation Center, HealthyVoting.org, Election Groups, Brennan Center, Simon &amp; Company, CTCL and its partners assume numerous aspects of administration in Zuckerberg's election processes. So under there, it said, for example, in Green Bay, the private corporations and their employees engaged in the following aspects of election administration. And under that, that's where it said that they provided a job description. So if it, if I said that was Mr. Spitzer Rubenstein and it wasn't, please accept my apology. But the point is that one of these advisors that we received by way of the grant advised us on the voter navigator position, which is concerning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. That is also not accurate.
What's not accurate?
That the, that the advisors that were offered to us through the grant advised us on the job description for the voter navigator.
Thanks, Clerk. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to make it clear. Nobody's saying that we're not going to have staff. And I think, you know, unfortunately, we're getting anxious right now. If there's one wish that I have, it's that we never hire someone in City Hall again called a voter navigator. Position's not needed. The clerk will hire whoever they need to hire to make sure that people have their questions answered. That is not going to discontinue. That is a basic obligation of that office, and they're going to do it, whether we have this position called a voter navigator, or we call it something completely different. So I think it's important for the public to know that we're not getting rid of support for people in terms of how to vote. That's going to exist. And I think for those that have a concern about whether or not navigators were involved in electioneering or, or swaying one type of voter over another, I think that will be sufficiently addressed in item six, probably. So I just don't want us to get too hung up on this position. Clerk's office will have all the staff that they need to make sure that people are supported. Clerk's office will have all the staff that they need to make sure that people are supported.
So there. Okay, we are four hours in, folks. Alder Gerlach and Alder Stoyer.
So can we, can't we just make this very simple and say that we will somehow assert that we will never again use the term voter navigator? End of conversation. We just won't use the term.
Yeah, we have the motion to receive and place on file. Alder Stoyer?
Just a point, you know, Alder Johnson brought it up too, you know, the fact that the clerk's office hires more people, part-time people to help. We had, when we had the election, the presidential election, we had 33,000 absentee votes come forward. Normally, we get 3,000. There were other departments in City Hall busting their tails many, many hours. And I think, I don't know if a lot of the citizens realize that. A lot of people were working very hard. So unusual circumstances, but I agree, the voter navigator item, get rid of that. I like the fact that the clerk's office can hire part-time people that will help with that, with these issues.
Yeah, okay. We got a motion received and placed on file. It was seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been received and placed on file. This is a mouthful. Number six. Alder Dorf?
Yes, it's a mouthful. It's a whole bunch of stuff about what we can't do. So I tried to put it in the affirmative of what we can do. So this is what I'd like to amend the motion to read, to refer to staff to identify the processes that can be used to ensure that the public is well-informed regarding the election process.
Is that a?
That's it.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, that was made by Alder Dorf and seconded by Alder LeFave. Discussion on that? Seeing none?
Okay, sure, sure. To refer to staff to identify the processes that can be used to ensure that the public is well-informed on the election process.
All in favor, will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That item has been referred to staff. Item seven, receiving place on file, request for any ideas, suggestions from staff, elders, or citizens. Entertained a motion received and placed on file?
So moved.
Made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That item has also been received and placed on file. Onto N5, refer to staff for internal discussion about designating or appointing a communication team or individual to handle communication requests and media requests in regard to elections by March 21st, review the 21522 election, and issues that arose at central count with the legal public noticing and changes thereof, and any other items that may arise regarding the administration of the election. Entertained a motion? Alder Weary?
I don't have a motion, but I'll talk to it. Okay. The item that was sent to the committee was consideration with possible action to review the February 15th, 22 election and issues that arose at central count with the legal public noticing and changes thereof, and any other items that may arise regarding the administration of the election. That's the item that went to committee that we are talking about right now. Regardless of how they handled it, that is the original, the original item, just so I preface that. So, you know, obviously, thanks for the people for showing up. And there's still some here tonight hanging out in the wee hours. Takeaways from the spring primary election staff. You know, we had with the city clerk, legal notice posting issues, obviously. Decision-making thereafter in public statements. And then we had public statements from the mayor and mayor's chief of staff. So, under the city clerk, there were incorrect times posted for absentee ballot observing as 4:00 p.m. instead of 7:00 a.m. It was online on the city hall doors and verbally communicated by staff to outside parties looking to have observers present all day. Once the error was discovered, did not change the online notice or take down the notices on the city hall doors, even though counting continued. No attempt to let media or public know of that change. Chose to continue counting instead of waiting for the post-time erroneous report to the Wisconsin Elections Commission and via city attorney to the city council. And I'm going to refer to the email we received and the report that went to the Elections Commission, whereas the clerk states, "Central count convened at approximately 7:00 a.m. and canvassers began counting absentee ballots shortly thereafter. At that time, there was one observer present to witness and observe the canvassing." Obviously, we know that's not true. Number two, given the fact, this is the next paragraph down, "Given the fact that election observers had been present at central count since absentee ballot counting began shortly after the polls opened, I exercised my discretion to permit the counting of ballots to resume." Another misstatement. Third, another two paragraphs down, "All counting of ballots occurred only during times prescribed by statute, and election observers were present throughout the process, as evidenced by the attached election observer log." Well, we now know that's not true. And the, this is maybe something we can approve in the future, but the observer log gives no times. You just sign in. And so I really think we should have a time in there as well as when people were there. Otherwise, they could have all been there all day or half day. We really don't know based on those logs. Now, if we move on, unfortunately, to the chief of staff misstatements in the Press Gazette. From February 15th, I see that there were four of them. Ahmad Rivera, chief of staff of Mayor Eric Gingrich's office, said the clerk's office mistyped the notice. "To read the ballot counting would open to the public for observation at 4:00 p.m. when it meant 7:00 a.m." We know it wasn't mistyped. According to Rivera, the city was made aware of the error before the polls opened. That's not right. "And contacted the Wisconsin's Elections Commission about the issue and asked whether the city could proceed. He said the commission allowed the city to proceed." Obviously not true, because they rebutted that, I think, the same day or later, saying they gave no advice. Then the fourth one, "The only issue was a clerical error," Rivera said. "City Hall had been open to the public all day. There were no barriers. There were no limitations." Now, you know, maybe no physical barriers, other than, you know, there was a sign on the door saying, "It's not 4:00 o'clock. Don't come in," or online saying 4:00. So that's really kind of a glossy look at it as well. And then, Mr. Mayor, your comments to WLUK, "The process was open and transparent. There was a regrettable clerical error, but there was outside observation throughout the vote counting. And things were done as they've always been done." Obviously not quite correct. Maybe everybody didn't have their facts straight quite yet. In all accounts, it just shows kind of a lack of accountability and truthfulness. After all the issues and questions with the previous elections, we really need to be perfect. We do. And if mistakes are made, we need to be truthful and transparent. Anything less that welcome, it just welcomes suspicion and erodes trust. If we don't do that, we need to own up to it right away. The oath that the Wisconsin city clerks take is very clear, and I'm quoting from the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association Code of Ethics. One, "To recognize that my chief function at all times is to serve the best interests of the public." Or the people, sorry. The second one, "To uphold both the letter and the spirit of the government and laws of the state of Wisconsin, my county and municipality, and to impart my profession, impart to my profession those standards of quality and integrity that the conduct of the affairs of my office shall be above reproach and will merit public confidence in my community." So, I mean, those are high standards, but we need that with elections. We've seen what happens when we don't have that. You know, for our legal staff, we have limited options on what we can do as a council. You know, the employees fall under your pervy, Mr. Mayor, discipline and so forth. So I know, I would suggest you do consider a new clerk. You know, we have reappointments coming up here in April. I would suggest you consider that, strongly consider it, as well as a chief of staff. Or have a, you know, a firm talking to about, you know, we can't be having this misinformation being put out and then not being corrected. So, in the interest of transparency and accountability, I do make a motion for the council to publicly disapprove of how the February 2022 spring primary was handled by city clerk Celestine Jeffries in reference to posting of legal notices, subsequent decisions to count ballots in contradiction to those notices, and erroneous public statements made to the WEC. So that's my motion.
Is there a second for that motion? Further discussion? Question for Attorney Bungert?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the motion?
Certainly. And keeping in mind, this is under the original request, which had anything, you know, review of the entire election with possible action by the committee and council. So I always make sure you put that in there, because if you forget to put with possible action, you're gonna be going back to committee. So the request is for council to publicly disapprove of how the February 2022 spring primary was handled by city clerk Celestine Jeffries in reference to posting of legal notices, subsequent decisions to count ballots in contradiction to those notices, and erroneous public statements made to the WEC.
Okay, so that would essentially function as an amendment to the item that's on the agenda. So the alder is moving to amend the item accordingly to how he stated it, and then it would proceed from there.
Okay.
Because you're amending the action that's coming out of committee.
Thank you. But there's no referral to staff any longer?
Right. It's changing it entirely.
Sort of, yeah.
That's the amendment.
But it's still treated as an amendment? Okay. There was a motion and a second. Alder Gerlach? Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
I don't understand what that motion has to do with number five, to refer to staff for internal discussion about designating or appointing a communication team or individual to handle communication requests and media requests, et cetera, et cetera. It sounds like an entirely different subject. I don't see how that is an amendment to what's here.
Sure. Alder Weary?
And I explained that right off the bat, in that what I sent to committee is really what we're discussing. How committee handled it is an entirely different matter. The way the, the way it was kind of put together for our handling was not really correct. You should put my request and then what was, what came out of that. My request was consideration with possible action to review the 21522 election and issues that arose at central count with the legal public noticing and change thereof, and any other items that may arise regarding the administration of the election. So that is what we're dealing with. Now, committee chose to do one thing. I'm asking us to do something else. That's all.
It's basically a substitute amendment. Alder, handle?
Yeah, I, well, I take a, until we, I would like to know further information before I would ever take a step like this. It seems like there are certainly miscommunications. They've been characterized as untruths. I don't know if that's something I would go so far without further information proving that, to accuse someone of that. As far as I know, there was, as I understand it, the count started at 7. It always starts at 7. The clerk discovered the error and stopped, called WEC. They got, they said, "Check with your legal." She checked with legal. By that time, she had observers then. And legal said, "Well, you got observers. Go ahead." If I understand everything correctly here, please correct me if I don't, then...
Do you want Attorney Bungert to do the recap?
Well, maybe that would be best.
That might be, might be easier.
Thank you.
Sure. So in summary, I don't have the statement or the timeline pulled up in front of me, but I can try and do that as I am speaking. So yes, so Celestine, or Clerk Jeffries, called me, alerted me that someone alerted her that there was a...
If you could, Attorney Bungert?
Yes, into the microphone, sorry. Alerted me that she had been alerted that there was a typo on the notice regarding central count that it stated. That was at around 11:20. And at that time, I had said, "Okay, pause counting. Contact the WEC. See what their point of view will be on it." I started doing some research, reviewing the statutes, conferring with other colleagues that were experts in election law, received advice, came up with an option. At that point, Celestine had received, or had some discussions with WEC, and it was determined that counting was appropriate because it was within the time prescribed under statute. However, the notice was incorrect, but counting could continue. And at that point, I was informed that observers were there and had been there. So at that point, Clerk Jeffries made the decision to resume counting.
But she dated until the Republican Party?
And then once, yes. And then a few hours passed, then we, the clerk's office was served with the cease and desist letter at that point, in the interest of not creating any more confusion. Counting was stopped until 4:00 p.m.
So if that's all correct, I see, and then reporters come, and there's miscommunication between mayor's office and whatever. So I see that as miscommunication, which is regrettable and something I'd like to see cleared up, certainly. The only thing I didn't realize before that I'm still a little confused about is that there was, who noticed that there was an error before the election? That was stated, that someone discovered the error before the election?
That's inaccurate.
That's inaccurate, okay. So, given that there was an error made, grievous one, not a... But every election has its errors. Every election. You're not gonna run a perfect election. That's insane. No one can do that. It's never been done. There's anomalies and errors every election. And because we have people scrutinizing so close, looking at everything with a magnifying glass, I think they've blown this up, though there is a valid point in that if what Ms. Juno stated, that she did not schedule people to observe earlier because of that notice, that's really unfortunate. And I'm hoping going forward, I believe, I don't think it's really the clerk's job to ensure that there's observers there. But I think going forward, if there could be more organization, more coordination, and that if there's not an observer there, that'd be a red flag to maybe start getting on the phone to some observers to see what's going on. I would like to see that going forward. But other than that, I don't, all this untruthfulness, and you're gonna need to come up with some evidence of people purposely being deceptive for that. I don't see any evidence of that. And I just see it as a mistake, mistaken communications, didn't help. But I see no wrongdoing here, no malicious malfeasance, and certainly no evidence that the election was, is inappropriate, that there was any problems, that the count wasn't accurate, that, you know, some shifty dealings were done or something. There's no evidence of that either. So I think, though there is something here to be concerned about, I don't, I'm not sure how far I'm gonna run with that.
So there. Alder LeFave?
I think it's, I think it's interesting that all of a sudden, you're going after Clerk Jeffries for everything. The election itself ran fine. There were no problems at the polls. The absentee ballots were there. My understanding is that it was an old form that was used. And anybody in their right mind, I mean, if she would have read that, you know, she grabbed the form to be printed. She didn't read the time. She missed the time. She would have known right away that was a red flag, that there's no way that they're gonna start at 4:00 o'clock. This must have been a really, really old form that she used, because we always start right after the polls open on election day. Even I know that. And some of the people that were complaining know about that, too. And unfortunately, somebody who was there saw it, but didn't mention anything to anybody, you know, what happened, that he did see the time, and he said, "Well, why is this?" But he went in and observed. He was sitting there. And I wish he, you know, would have mentioned something, and maybe it wouldn't have been a bruja that it is now. I'm afraid it is. But Clerk Jeffries, she owned it. She said, "Yes, I made the mistake. I printed the form. It was posted." She apologized for that. She did not lie. She did not try to blame it on anyone else. And so, please, let's be clear on that. And so, please, let's be clear on that. Clerk Jeffries, she tried to do the best she could, and this is a mistake that was happened, that happened. Unfortunately, yes. But we do have, in our communication, we want to make it clear that when, with the elections on anything, when anybody talks about what went on, interviewed on any of the elections, that we have a one voice. One person answers any of the questions by the public, by the media, so that we don't get all these different people talking about it. And so then, there was confusion. So we don't want confusion. We want to make sure that everybody knows exactly what happened. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett, then Alder Gerlach?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for Clerk Jeffries. I watched the Protection Policy Committee meeting, and one thing that I'm curious about, Clerk Jeffries mentioned that the form was used, it was like a template form. Clerk Jeffries, can you tell me, when have we ever, I know you're new to your position, relatively new, when have we ever had a notice time of four until five o'clock in pass counting of ballots?
So it was an old notice that I found. It was that I did not see the error, so I'm not sure exactly when that notice was used last. I did use it in last February's election, February 2021. But I had, as I said, I had gotten it from our drive, our shared drive.
So that notice form for the 2020, we, oh yeah, we had school board election. 2021, you used the same form with the post date of four until five?
That is correct. I did not catch that mistake then. As I said, it was a notice that I had pulled from the shared drive.
Right.
Didn't see the time.
Okay.
That was not the case in April, however. So the notice in April 21 was correct.
Okay. Yeah, the thing that I, and I'm not going to badger you, but the thing that, the question that I could not come to grasp with was, when would we ever have counting from four until five? I get that it's a shared drive, perhaps a template form that's wrong, but it just seemed strange to me that we would have a form like that created at all or out there. And hopefully, you've cleaned up that shared drive so it doesn't happen again. And I know the city attorney has been given the directive to periphery everything before it goes out, which is good. Now, I'll just add to my comments. I support the motion. It's uncomfortable. This is uncomfortable because we basically are having a public conversation about something that occurred within our city government that is uncomfortable to talk about, because these are people, these are people that we respect, who maybe, maybe not did everything exactly the way that they should have in this circumstance. But that doesn't mean we don't respect them personally or professionally. And I most certainly do have a lot of respect for all of the people involved. But that does not diminish the fact that there were rather significant errors made. And I think that what was most concerning to me was just the inconsistencies of explaining it, explaining it to the public, explaining it to the council members. You know, we had a situation, we have to know these things. We have to know these things because we are basically the board of directors. I don't like thinking of it in a corporate sense, but as city council members, we are active members of this city government. And although we don't manage the day-to-day operations of city government, that's a function of the administration, we do set policy. And the policies were there for the administration to, you know, conduct an election, and a mistake was made. And so I think what I'm really concerned about, I learned a lot about this through the media, which is where I tend to learn a lot of things that happen in Green Bay, is through the media. And our response from the, you know, our city attorney, all due respect, I know it's uncomfortable. I don't like talking of these things. I really don't. I just, it makes me kind of nervous. But yet again, I think I'm elected to represent the people, and I have to represent the people. Otherwise, I'd be derelict in duty. And these are the things that the public are telling me that they're concerned about. These are things that many members of the public are concerned about. And so what I'm really struggling with in regards to this situation is the city council did not know about everything officially, official response from City Hall until, you know, a full 24 hours after the whole thing happened, email right before the council meeting of two weeks ago that we convened as a body. And then, then when you get that lack of communication, then, you know, we are bombarded with different things. And of course, we can reach out, and we, I reach out all the time to City Hall. What's going on, you know, different people and different staff levels, because I can communicate it to my constituents. But then, just yet another email we get today, an hour before we convene here, that then we get a communication that the city did in fact get it wrong, that there weren't observers the entire time, that the city then admits that there were observers from 8:30 on, rather than seven or 7:30 on, which we had been told up until that point. So I don't like taking these positions, and I don't like taking these stances. I don't like talking of people who I respect and who I have a lot of, you know, regard for. But nonetheless, it's our position. It's our job. I do not feel comfortable. I mean, mistakes happen, but this is a rather significant issue because there were members of the public who wanted to observe, or, you know, we heard from Ms. Juno and the Republican Party, there were members there that were told from the clerk's office, whether it was the clerk herself or her staff, she's, that those staff members still report to the clerk. And they were told that, you know, the time for the counting, according to them, was at four. So they made their plans, and they did not, you know, show up. And then Mr. Razor, member of the public, just happened to stop in the City Hall at 8:30 and realized that people are counting ballots outside of the publicly noticed time. That is not okay. That is not okay. And what's not okay is when you publicly notice the ballot counting starting at four, and it's on the website, there are members of the public who, maybe we not, aren't aware of them, but maybe they wanted to show up. Maybe they went online, or they looked at the city clerk's office and saw 4:00 PM count time. So they didn't show up, and that's wrong. It's wrong when you make a wrong public notice. And we can talk about it as being a typer, typo, clerical error. I get all that. We can extend grace in those situations. But there are concerns that have been going on with our elections. And what's most concerning about this was just the lack of coordination and response. The answers that were given seem to contradict themselves. And that's why I support the motion, no matter how uncomfortable. It truly, honestly, very sincerely makes me to take that vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
I share the concern of Alder Weary and Alder Burnett about the serious errors that were made in our February 15 election. I'm very concerned about the way that election went. I would like to ask a question. Your Honor, if you can answer this, and this, I have something to propose also, but I first of all want to know, how many elections has Clerk Jeffries administered in her tenure?
You would have to ask her.
Clerk Jeffries, how many elections have you administered since you became clerk?
This is my third.
Okay, thank you.
That was my third.
I would like, I am very concerned. We needed to have a good, clean election, and this wasn't good. It wasn't good on its face. But I wonder if Alder Weary would consider, because I don't, I will certainly not support this, this, this motion. And I don't think there's, there's really going to be much stomach for it from the majority of the council. So I wonder if Alder Weary would be comfortable instead, asking the clerk to provide for us a careful study of exactly what went wrong in this election, and exactly what she's going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again. Would you be willing to substitute that instead of, I can't say the words exactly how you said it, but I know the spirit of it?
Alder Weary?
Certainly. I think after we vote on my motion, that would be an excellent thing to bring up.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, Alder Johnson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a question for Attorney Bungert. It would seem to me, and I just want to make sure that we're in compliance even with this vote. It would seem to me that a, a public vote disapproving of a staff seems to be more of a disciplinary action. Is that within the purview of council? And is there an appropriately defined process for such an action?
I will actually defer this question to Director Foltz.
I don't, excuse me, I don't have really a good answer to that in the sense of, there's been some motions in my time here that maybe have been, I wouldn't say similar to this, but I think the council may have had a motion like this in the past. Not that I can think of. Typically, if there's a discipline matter that should go through human resources in the mayor's office to determine what the discipline would be for the city clerk. So I, I don't know if this is actually considered discipline, or if it's just some type of public consideration from the common council. So I honestly don't know the answer to that. I don't have a good answer for you.
Sure. I mean, to me, it feels almost a little bit like a public censure. I mean, it's, you know, and I think that's my concern, right? It's recognizing what is the responsibility of council, and what is the responsibility of the mayor. And at the end of the day, it is the mayor's responsibility to manage our staff, to discipline them, to give them feedback and mentorship and guidance on corrective behaviors. And quite frankly, I am a little bit uncomfortable, to Alder Burnett's point, having this conversation. And I think one of the biggest reasons I'm uncomfortable with it is because I don't think it's our responsibility. It doesn't mean I don't care about what happened at the election, but it means that the responsibility of that falls with the CEO of your organization, right? That's because there's, there's a lot of moving pieces here. The clerk was not the only person that was involved in what's happening here, yet it's the only person being called out in this. And so if we wanted to say something like, "Hey, the city didn't, you know, fully execute its responsibilities," I would be much more comfortable with that because we've identified a couple of individuals already that probably made mistakes in that process. But I think the other thing that makes me a little bit uncomfortable with it is we don't have a report, you know, in front of us that we've had an opportunity to review. I think all of us were maybe caught a little bit flat-footed with this, this direction, you know, without really having the opportunity to fully kind of process what an action like this does. And that's what I don't fully understand. Do I think the city made mistakes? I sure do. In fact, I think I was one of the first people to come out and say, "You know what? Mistakes were made." I personally was a little bit more disappointed in our reaction. But I'm just not at a point now where I think it's appropriate for the council to even be acting on this motion.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments? Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Alder Johnson. I mean, at one point in time, my position at the police department was the public information officer. And when it involved officers that had made mistakes, whether on purpose or by accident, at that time, the administration at the department was to get in front of it, admit what we had done wrong, and reassure the public that it was being handled, and in some cases, releasing information on discipline that was taken with those officers. This incident, it looks like, it reminds me of a bunch of people trying to juggle balls and fumbling all over the place. Information was coming from different sources. It was delayed. It didn't, upon scrutiny, it didn't match up. And it reflects poorly on our city and our election process. And obviously, like everyone's already, already stated, this was not the time to have something like this happen. But if council wants to take action against an employee, we have a process to do that. We can file a complaint against that employee and let the processes that are already in place take place. We can even have an employee dismissed. We just discussed this at the last council meeting, if we feel there's just cause. And I don't like this because this employee is not able to defend themselves by the way we're going about this. There's no due process. And that makes me really uncomfortable. Everyone deserves a right to defend themselves, to own up to what they did or didn't do, and to set the record straight. And then, as a council, we would make a decision what to do. I mean, we've had council members go through the discipline process. And as uncomfortable as that may have been for them, it was, they were given, afforded that right, that ability to defend themselves, present witnesses and evidence. And again, we're talking about America here. We're talking about the integrity of our elections. What about the integrity of due process for our employees? I'm not in favor of this. I would be in favor of some other type of item being put forward, but I'm certainly not in favor of this. Thank you.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to, because you are correct, the speakers are speaking in a way that makes sense to me. But the motion on the table isn't a reprimand of a specific employee. It's stating that we, as a council, do not approve of the February, now, a person can make that connection, but it doesn't, the motion, I don't believe, Mayor, says anything about a specific employee or their specific actions. It's just saying that as a body, we do not approve of how the election was ran. Is that correct?
I believe it did.
What was your motion?
Alder Weary?
Go ahead, if you could. Could I ask that, Mayor?
Certainly. It, the motion is for council to publicly disapprove of how the February 2022 spring primary was handled by City Clerk Celestine Jeffries, because that's the person who runs the election.
When I seconded, I apologize. I didn't understand, I didn't hear that first part, or that last part with Clerk Jeffries.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Very briefly, I agree with Alder Galvin. I agree with Alder Scannell. I agree with Alder Johnson. I agree with Alder Gerlach. And I will definitely be voting against this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary, for a second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the motion is disapproving of how it was handled. The person who runs it is the person mentioned. That's, that's the reason. This motion doesn't fire anybody. This mention doesn't, this motion doesn't suspend anybody. This motion doesn't fine anybody. It's simply council saying, "Don't like what happened." There was a lack of attention to detail, missing an incorrect notice time, which is very, very important. You can't miss stuff like that. And then when we did, when clerk did find out, there was the decision to continue counting anyway, even after being notified. It was compounded. Then, there was a decision not to take down or change the notices online, or on the doors, or to let the public know. There's another decision. And then another decision was to file an erroneous report to WEC that we're now correcting today, because committee thankfully did ask that a correction be sent out. I haven't read it entirely to see if it's, if it's accurate. But plenty of things there that we can say, "You know what? Shouldn't have been handled that way." That's all.
Alder Scannell, Stoyer, Galvin, for a second time.
Just, just a question of legal. Could the clerk legally, once, you know, changed the notice, since it's been posted? Could she have gone and got a marker and changed it, after it's been legally posted? Can you really?
Right. So the statutes require that notice has to be posted 48 hours prior to the convening of the canvas board. So if there was no way of correcting that, then it would have put central count 48 hours later. But then you would be outside of the statutes to be able to count ballots, because that has to happen after the polls open and no later than 10:00 PM.
You want to ask a question of Attorney Bungert?
Anybody coming up to the door would say, "There's no counting going on. Nothing's going on here. I'm going home. Same with online."
Is that a question, Alder Weary?
It's a question.
Let's make it.
I think we may be asking...
Attorney Bungert?
Sorry, I think we may be asking two different things. I think you're asking whether the notice could be redone, and the notice wouldn't be able to be redone. Could it have been updated? Theoretically, yes, it can be revised. But would that have satisfied the requirement? No, because it wouldn't have met the 48-hour notice. So there is no way of fixing it to be in line with what the statute provides.
Or removing it would have been legal to just take it down?
The notice has to be up, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, during the committee meeting last week, Clerk Jeffries did apologize numerous times that a mistake was made. And we always look for accountability. I think one of the, you know, this, this motion makes me a little uncomfortable, too, only in the sense that it wasn't just the clerk's office. It was administration. There was a few other things that happened, I think, that caused some issue. And I think, I just saw something on television. It was, it might have been Channel 11, when they were interviewing Clerk Jeffries, and they asked her a specific question about the election. And she said, "Go ask the mayor's office." You know, she was deferring to your office. And then they had a hard time getting any answers from the mayor's office. So I'm, even though Alder Weary's talking about, you know, this...
even though Alder Weary's talking about, you know, this, the election didn't work out, for a while, it just seemed like we were pointing fingers strictly at one person. And I, I'm uncomfortable with that. I think there's more that has to be looked at with this. Um, so you're not pointing at just one person, correct?
Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this is for Attorney Bungert. If, if the notices were pulled off the door, would that have also been a violation of state law?
Attorney Bungert?
It would be contrary to what open meetings requires, so much like any notice that's posted for any meeting of a public body. Um, it's required to be up under state law, so therefore, while state law doesn't say you can't take it down, it's required to be posted.
So if it was, and I, and I'm, and I heard something, and this is, again, this is the problem with rumors and everything. I heard something, uh, some rumor that somebody pulled those notices off the doors. Would, would that be a violation, in your opinion?
It would be, I, I can't say specifically whether it would be a violation of election law. I would say it would be contrary to what statutes require.
Okay. And then, some people in the gallery today said that we should have followed what we posted, which means that we would have had to stop counting those ballots at 5:00 PM?
It would have, it, it said, I believe the notice said, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM or until finished.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, again, Alder Weary said just recently here, uh, and when he was responding, that, uh, Clerk Jeffries made decisions, and made decisions, and made decisions, and made decisions, and made decisions. And I don't know if she did or didn't. And until she has the ability to defend herself, none of us know. So we all agree, there are a lot of mistakes made here. And I don't think they were all just made by Clerk Jeffries. And so for us to, and I, I understand she is in charge of the election, but there was a lot of other stuff that people are concerned about that, although related to the election, weren't part of the election. And I think for us to, to, uh, take this up and vote, uh, in favor of it, again, does not afford her, her due process rights. Um, and I, I can't support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson, for a second time?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make an amendment. Uh, I believe that's, that's in order, um, to amend an amendment, uh, to just strike, uh, reference of Clerk Jeffries, uh, to the motion. Uh, so if Alder Weary is willing to reread his motion?
Alder Weary?
Anything for you, Alder Johnson? Uh, all right. The council will publicly disapprove of how the February 2022 spring primary was handled by City Clerk Celestine Jeffries in reference to posting of illegal notices, subsequent decisions to count ballots in contradiction to those notices, and erroneous public statements made to the WEC.
Okay. So if, if there's a second to the motion, Mayor, um, I would certainly be happy to explain it.
And you're, you're simply removing clerk's name?
Correct.
Seconded by Alder Galvin?
Yeah. And, and, and the purpose of, I guess, the motion is, you know, I'm trying to read the room here. And, and I think there seems to be some general sentiment that, yep, we disapprove of, of what happened with the election, but, uh, there seems to be broad consensus that nobody wants to point the finger at one person. And I think that's an appropriate assessment of the situation. I think multiple people made mistakes here. Uh, so let's just, and if the goal is to say we disapprove of what happened, let's, let's do it. I, I'll support that. I do disapprove of what happened. I don't like how it unfolded. But more importantly, let's not just point a finger and throw our hands up in the air. Let's, let's figure out some solution to blute about. Uh, many of those things are being referred back. So if this is, Galvin, I'll go on record with that, but I, again, I, I still won't do it by pointing the finger at one single person.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to amend. It was seconded by Alder Galvin, Alder Gerlach, and then Alder Burnett.
Do I understand that, I, I'm, I'm not sure I heard it right. Did you say that, um, there were illegal announcements posted or something? Did you use the word illegal?
Let me, Mayor, if I could modify my motion, Mayor, to just say, um, that we disapprove of the, of the February 15th election, and then my amendment is to drop everything after that.
Okay. Does Alder Galvin still second that? Okay. We have Alder Burnett and then Alder LeFave.
Yeah. Again, I, I support the motion. In the past, I've been very careful and deliberate in, when I talk about positions, although I slip up from now and then, I try to keep the personalities of the actual people, the living souls, in the position. Whereas it's the positions, and I get it, it's kind of weird because there's a person in the position, but it's the position. And I, I think the motion is a very good one, because even in our Code of Conduct for Elected Officials, very clearly states that we cannot publicly criticize the work conduct of a city employee, and we should go to their supervisor. So I think we'd be in very, uh, I think we've all been brought up in charges of violating the Code of Ethics by now, or Code of Conduct, not trying to be funny about it, but I think we certainly should be mindful of the existing policy and, and not inadvertently or purposely, uh, criticize a public employee, you know, publicly, a city employee publicly, although some of our comments can be construed that way, obviously. So I support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach, and then Alder Dorf?
Excuse me, Mayor, next.
Oh, sorry. Alder LeFave, then Alder Gerlach.
I would like another clarification. We're saying the election. Well, nothing happened at the polls. Nothing happened at the early voting. It was the counting of the absentee ballots. I think that's what we should state, because otherwise, we're gonna say that, oh, there must have been more things going on with the election. I don't want that. Come on. We're, let's, let's be more specific, that it was this one issue. Thank you.
Alder Gerlach?
I don't support, um, the council publicly criticizing, I, I can't, I'm sorry, it's getting late and I can't remember all the words, but I, I just can't support this motion, even as it has been truncated. I would like us to vote on it. I would like it to be voted down, and I would like us to do something positive. This doesn't solve anything. This doesn't help. Let's do something positive, such as I proposed.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Yes, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to hear the motion one more time, that very truncated motion. Could you please repeat that, Alder Weary? Oh, Alder Johnson, sorry. Alder Johnson, could you repeat that, please?
Look, I was trying to make something easier, and it's clearly making it more complicated. I withdraw my amendment. And we can just hold the vote on Alder Weary's motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is Alder Weary's amendment to the, to the item for a third time?
Yeah.
Only, only two times, council. That's the, that's the rule.
I second the, thank you for granting me a little leniency. I appreciate it. Um, I second the original motion on the floor. If I could make a motion to remove, uh, to basically change it from City Clerk Celestine Jeffries to the position of City Clerk.
Is there a second for that amendment to the amendment? Seconded by Alder Weary. Further discussion? Alder Scannell?
I'm not sure that skirts the, um, ethics code. I mean, you're not naming the person, but you're naming the office, so you're pretty much naming the person. I'm not sure you're, you're helping yourselves there as far as an ethics complaint. Um, and, uh, well, I've already commented on this one in Johnson's poll, so I'm done. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. So we have a motion to amend by Alder Burnett, uh, which takes out the, the name of our clerk, but maintains the office in the, the motion that Alder Weary had stated. All in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye. A request has been, a request has been made to use the board, and this is on Alder Burnett's amendment to Alder Weary's amendment.
May it be written.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
Alder Weary, we do have a roll call.
Under advisement here on the, on the question, I'm going to ask our attorney, because I, we did have discussion by email whether or not the city council could do this. And I was advised we could. If I'm wrong and I misread it, then I'd be glad to hear, you know. I would like some advice on this. It's something that's gonna go to an ethics.
Clerk, if you could hold off on the, hold off on the roll call. Attorney Bungert?
Yep. Just pulling up what we had discussed. My bad, I might. I have the email thread. One second. So what I had, um, provided, um, generally is that procedurally, um, is that with, with respect to the city clerk and, and, um, chief of staff and other employees, the options to discipline, as Director Folds indicated, is solely within the authority of the mayor and Human Resources, but council can issue a statement, um, as Alder Weary had indicated to me in the email. Um, and it would just need to be voted to be adopted. And that just goes through the regular channels.
Yeah, I think the question was, how does that relate to the Code of Conduct?
That I can't really answer right now. Um, I'd have to look into that and.
Chief Folds?
I think with, uh, with respect to the, the emails between Alder Weary and, and Joanna and myself, or, excuse me, and City Attorney Bungert, I think the, the response from both of us was, the options to discipline are within Human Resources and the mayor's office, and a statement was more of what was talked about before, a general sense of the election, and not naming a position or a person. That's what the response was intended for.
Okay. Um, we do have a roll call that's supposed to take place here. So, either Alder Weary or Alder Burnett?
Alder Burnett? Yeah. Thank you again, fourth time. Thanks for continuing to be lenient. Uh, the Code of Conduct for Elected Officials says, council never publicly demean or personally attack an individual employee. Uh, council members shall never demean or personally attack an employee regarding the employee's job performance in public, which we've been talking about, obviously. All employee performance issues shall be forwarded to the employee's supervisor or the city attorney through private correspondence or conversation. So, real specifically, I think a point of order would be, would we be violating, because I don't want him to take a vote if I'd be violating even by chance the Code of Conduct. Yeah, the attorneys, I'm sorry, the attorneys.
Either Attorney Bungert or Chief Folds?
One second, I'm just pulling up the ordinances. That would be lovely.
Last one, bathroom break. 11:16, and we'll be back. We're at 11:16, so they'll call us back to order. Uh, really was a question of Attorney Bungert?
Yes.
Your mic. Alder Weary?
Yeah, I think it's fine. I'll pull the motion. There's uncertainty around it compared to what I had in advice, and maybe we had miscommunications, thought it was in solid footing based on that. But if we're not, that's fine. We had a robust discussion about what happened and actions that were taken. And that's fine. So I, I would go back to what committee had for a point person. I think that's a very valid thing that came out of committee, is that we have one person who's available to answer questions. I think that's very, very valid.
Yep.
Instead of, you know, um, the media, you know, spending hours trying to find out who to talk to. That's frustrating everybody's point, everybody's part.
Yeah. I can weigh in if you, if you'd like, you know, on that point. Yeah, we've had a lot of discussions, you know, following, um, the primary election, and just made it clear that, um, you know, appointed officials and senior staff who are involved in these consequential decisions need to be available to speak to the media, um, because they are the most knowledgeable of the situation. It was a very chaotic experience, and Clerk Jeffries is trying to do her job and speak to the media at the same time. Um, and so certainly understand how that happened, but going forward, the expectation is very clear that senior staff slash appointed officials need to be the ones that respond to media when, when requests come in. The other piece that I think has been discussed is, the law department will always be involved, um, in reviewing notices, uh, related to elections or things that are produced by the clerk's office. Uh, so I think that's a, that's a good safeguard to have in place. Uh, additional questions or comments? Alder Van der Liest?
Thank you, Mayor. At committee level, I recommended that Mr. Folds be our spokesperson. Uh, I brought it up at the committee, and I think he's a sound person to be the, the person to do it.
Yeah. And we might not consent to that, but we can, could ask.
Thank you.
You bet. Alder Galvin?
I, I agree that staff should always be available. I agree staff should always be available, but I don't think that's always possible. And I think that's why, like, at the police department, they had a PIO. I mean, that's a person you can go around behind the scenes, get information for that, that, uh, staff member. Um, and then that's the same person that the media always knows they can go to to get some information. Um, you know, obviously, it, it seems there was a lack of communication between yourself, uh, Clerk Jeffries, uh, and Ahmad with connecting with the different medias and everything. And, and I think that's where some of these issues, um, came to arise. So I mean.
Well, I think the, yeah, if I could just speak to that real quickly. I mean, I think the issue was Clerk Jeffries was doing the job of clerk, um, when this arose. And so there was, there was a need to interrupt that business, um, and consult with Attorney Bungert, with Ahmad, with myself, and then, you know, decide on a, on a strategy, a communication strategy.
Right.
Um, because of, you know, how things were, how everything went down, that conversation didn't take place. But that's another key piece of communication strategy going forward.
Right. Exactly. And so I, I just think if, if the city works at this a little bit harder and gets those, uh, procedures and policies in place, I mean, not just with elections, with anything that's going on, fire department, police department, DPW, I, I think we come off looking more informed, more responsive, and, and I think that's what the citizens want. Um, and, you know, they want the information, and, and they want it as soon as possible. And I, the same goes for the council finding out. I, no one here likes finding out, you know, from a reporter or anyone else that there's something going on. And I know that's hard to think of all those different things that have to be handled, uh, but somebody has to be responsible for that, so to make sure it gets done. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, Alder Scannell?
Yeah, uh, just to get back to business, what are we doing with number five now?
So it's the original motion here.
The original motion? That's where we're at?
We haven't, we haven't actually had a motion on that.
To refer to staff.
We approved number five.
Okay.
Motion has been made to refer to staff, et cetera, et cetera, by Alder Dorf, uh, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. And now we're on to item six. And that, motion to approve, maybe by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. I think that was Alder Weary. Is that right? All right.
Should've got some caffeine when we were away. Shift gears here. Okay. My questions would be regarding the, the underage. And I know, um, Attorney Bungert, you and I exchanged probably 20 emails about this today and yesterday. Um, I was asking if we could basically mimic or mirror what the state does for underage drinking, for consumption of alcohol. You know, just remove alcohol and insert marijuana. And that, that would be, my motion is to mirror, mimic that. And I'm sure you all have questions about that means. Um, no? So, okay, well, that's my motion.
Do you want to run through it, or do you want?
Uh.
Okay, Attorney Bungert, you want to, well, is that a motion that you have?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. You're making a motion, um, to, maybe you could.
To mirror or mimic state law on underage, uh, alcohol consumption or possession. To mirror or mimic state law on underage alcohol consumption or possession. Just inserting.
In terms of marijuana possession, okay.
Because we would be less restrictive than alcohol, really. I think it should be the same.
Alder Weary makes that amendment. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Scannell, sorry. Attorney Bungert, can you maybe describe that for us?
This is on. Okay, so currently, the way that the ordinance is set up is, let me pull that up.
Maybe if, you're probably planning on doing this anyway, but maybe describe where that was pulled from? The underage?
Yes, so the underage bifurcation essentially, or creating persons, a separate, a separate forfeiture amount or a different forfeiture amount was actually pulled from the Fond du Lac ordinance regarding marijuana possession for persons under 21. And there's a set at around the same level. So ours is currently, the way it's presented in the draft is any person under the age of 21 in an amount who's possessing marijuana in an amount of 28 grams or less consumes marijuana or possesses marijuana paraphernalia as defined in the ordinance shall forfeit not less than $1, no more than $100. And then also, there's community service in lieu of conjunction, in lieu of or in conjunction with the forfeiture. So that's just the forfeiture amount, not inclusive of costs. What Alder Weary is presenting is, and just to clarify, what we would be mirroring is the penalty structure that's contained in Chapter 125. I'm pulling that up right now. Which provides further levels of penalties or forfeitures, because they're not penalties, they're, it's a civil forfeiture, it's not a criminal violation. So 125 oh seven provides that if not accompanied by a parent or legal guardian, because in Wisconsin, you can consume alcohol if you're with your parent. It is in a certain age range, obviously. It is illegal for anyone under 21 to knowingly possess or consume alcoholic beverages. First offense is $100 to $200. Second offense in a year is $200 to $300. Third offense in a year is $300 to $500. Fourth offense in a year is $500 to $1,000 fine. So my understanding, and Alder Weary, please correct me if that is, if I am incorrect, that would be the amendment that you're proposing is putting in that additional step structure that elevates the amount of the forfeiture depending on the number of offenses.
That's correct, you know, and I do like the community service option in lieu of forfeiture.
Yes.
So I do like that option remaining in there. I just think it was good to have the same penalties for two related items, you know, that 21 or older. So I just think it'd be fine to go with state law, but also just add in that, you know, you can do community service. I think that's a good addition.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend and a second. Alda Galvin?
I just have a quick question for either, I guess, Alder Weary and then maybe Attorney Bungert. As she was reading this, she said that if that child drinking alcohol is with their parent, it's okay. So that's how this is going to read if her child is smoking dope with their parents or?
No, not that piece.
All right. Just want to make sure. We're all tired and you don't want to have something go through like that. All right, thank you.
You bet. Additional questions or comments? Attorney Bungert?
Yes, sorry, one additional clarification because I noticed that our range is not less than $1, not more than $100. Would we want that first level to be within? Is that what the Alder is proposing? Because the way that the liquor or the alcohol statutes provide, it's $100 to $200.
So the question is?
So the range, is that the range, the first step range that we want? Or do we want it to be less than that? For the first offense?
You know, to start the discussion, I just wanted to mimic or mirror state law, so that's where.
Okay, all right. So if that, so then it wouldn't be not less than, the first step would be $100 to $200?
Okay, so not less than $100 nor more than $200, is that?
Right, correct. Not less than $100 nor more than $200.
Okay. Additional comments on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that has been approved as amended. Now, this takes us back to our presentation. My understanding is that we probably, I think we've lost the Sustainability Commission, so. Alder Dorf?
Yeah, Sustainability Commission report and the presentation, and move those to the next meeting.
Motion has been made to hold over items J and L to the next meeting of the Common Council. That was made by Alder Dorf and seconded by Alder Steyer. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it.
May I clarify something?
The motion has been approved, yeah.
During a previous break, I did put that out there to them and they did agree at a certain time that it should be cut off. So they're fine with it, okay?
Thank you.
Well, I think.
Thank you, Alda. Onto Report of the Improvement in Services Committee.
Excuse me, your honor, we have to do the ordinances, I believe?
Oh, thank you very much. Sorry about that. So this is ordinances, second reading for adoption.
Move to adopt? Were we up at the top? Letter K.
Second.
Okay. Motion to adopt has been made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we use the board.
Alder Burnett, how would you like to be reported?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we moved.
The entire Protection Policy Report up?
Yeah, we've dispensed with Protection Policy.
But did we do the liquor violations? Don't we have to do that separate?
That wasn't pulled. Four, five, and six were pulled.
Right, but don't we still do that separate?
Not until the next, it's.
Okay, never mind, never mind.
Okay.
So here is your displayed vote.
Thank you, clerk.
You're welcome.
That was adopted 12-0. Onto Improvement in Services Committee.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor approving that report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved.
Oh.
Report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
And the motion to approve was made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any names here to be handled separately or abstentions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Onto Q. Report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Resolutions?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Thank you, just give me a moment.
You bet.
Okay, thank you, Alders, you may vote. Here is your displayed vote.
And those resolutions are adopted unanimously. Ordinances, first reading.
Your honor, do we need to not, do we have to separate the marijuana one because we made changes?
Good point. Is that Attorney Bungert? Yes, yep.
So a motion to suspend the rules for all but number two.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up S1, 3, and 4 with one roll call vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance items S1, S3, and S4. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Those ordinances are advanced to a second and final reading. S2?
Motion to advance as amended.
Motion to advance as amended, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That ordinance has been advanced as well. Petitions and communications?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Pose nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.